We're going to anyway. So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this regular call meeting of the Temple City Council to conduct a workshop. The time is currently 1:00 PM. First item is public comments. Anyone who wishes to address the council may be so on an item that's listed on the workshop agenda, and we ask you keep your comments to no more than three minutes. And no discussion or final action will be taken by the council. I believe Mr. Lyles first on the list. Alan?
Yes, sir.
How are you, sir?
Thank you. Good afternoon, council and mayor and staff. I just wanted to adjust the issue that I believe is coming up, which is in the budgeting of the additional fees for that are going to be on the water bill, I assume, the first of October. I haven't seen anything advertised in the water bills or on the website about these upcoming fees. I'm afraid if that happens, that we put those fees on in October and don't tell anybody, then you're gonna get an awful lot of complaints in October.
Are you gonna listen in to the rest of the workshop?
I'm gonna do my very best. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you'll be happy to learn something.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
To be continued, Alan. Next up, Mr. Jeffrey Ware.
That's good. My name is Jeffrey Ware, Mayor. Thank you again and council. Y'all know me over the past, and if you guys know what my challenges are, those are my challenges. I'm with Americans for Prosperity, a policy-oriented organization. And budget and tax reform is our big issue that we're talking about for this year and next year. And I want to thank you and your team for the diligence that you do and listening to your constituents. And you guys have always done that and finding that balance, and I can't appreciate that enough that we continue to work together.
Thank you for that. All right. Next item is to discuss any regular meeting agenda items that are posted for tonight. It looks like that we will be postponing the consent agenda, item 4C, through the August 21st meeting. Hope everybody will adopting the first of the select, yeah, so we will postpone item 4C. Councilor staff, is there anything else on the consent that needs to be addressed today?
I have a question.
Or you said, I mean, on the swap of land with Belton's ETJ.
Let's look at that map. You know, it makes no difference for me, but that sure leaves a strange little piece out here that's not contiguous. And Belton's gonna be coming back looking for that at some point.
Anybody want to address that?
Brian, do you have any comments on that?
Sure. General comments that the pieces and I honestly don't know how clear the map is, but we were involved with our primary discussions with the city manager, the city of Belton, and also their planning director. And so it looked like a true win-win in that, you know, they they had this piece that is across the river. You know, in our, in our ETJ, but you know, much more in line with our future development of where we would where it makes sense, where we would expand. And then the piece that we're swapping to them is part of a development that, you know, large-scale development that they're working on that is contiguous. So it really, it really did kind of put the puzzle in the right spot. Just according to my perspective, we look at it. So like I said, I don't know about the map. It might not be it.
And I don't have a problem with it. I was just making observations. Did you say they're gonna come back looking for it? If it has to be moved, we might give it back. There you go.
We are, assuming that you approve it as on the agenda tonight, it's honoring what they have requested. So they, that's, that's what they wanted was to receive that. And I think if memory serves, it also aligned with our CCN, which is the boundary by which each entity can serve water and wastewater. So it made sense to have the city of Temples ETJ align with our CCN and vice versa for Belton. So that's also a factor in determining where the lines were recommended.
Yeah, good. Thank you. They're good? Good with that? Anything else?
I did want to thank Belinda and her staff for getting Station Two's remediation on the agenda so quickly. I really do certainly appreciate that. And yeah, and their new home, Palm Harbor Home.
Yeah, I drove by that last week and thought such an air. That was, we got sent by staff. And Ms. Meyer said they're in there. It's occupied.
It is a ratification. So if you, you don't approve it, I told me this morning that I purchased myself a mobile home.
Your neighbors love it.
So that could be your first ADU? Okay, what else?
I don't want to pull eight, but I do want to have some time to talk about both under the regular agenda. About more about book during this workshop sometime.
Well, I think right now is the time to do it. Let's do it.
Mayor, we do have some staff presentations prepared. So, and I, I was, it was not, not on the consent agenda, but I was gonna ask that we cover that. Well, I, I think now would be an appropriate time if y'all are ready. Like, there's nothing else on the agenda.
Anything else on Adam two, I'm sorry, Adam one regarding consent or regular before we move on to that item?
And then Brian also has the zoning case that we can go through as well before we move on to the next agenda.
Hey, well, let's, Brian, why don't you go through your zoning cases and then Councilor Graham will get to breaking bone.
Right, sounds good. Good afternoon. We've got two cases on the agenda, a zoning case, starting with 11-717, 11-535 West Adams. And then we'll talk about just a site plan associated with a previously approved plan development from about a year ago, actually a little more than a year ago on Hogan Road. So starting with the West Adams. All right, thank you. So here's the site. It's, it's west of one of the Lakewood neighborhoods. And just to the east of 2271 is a proposed primarily business park, so actually very similar to the expansion of Commonwealth, Arbor Square, different developer. Thank you. And next slide, please. So just give you a little more context of where it's located. I think we, we all know that location. Next slide, please. So just under nine acres. And I think the key is, and I think this developer also learned from some of the challenges to the north with Arbor, the Arbor Square expansion, providing a 20-foot landscape buffer. They do already have lots of trees there that they plan to keep. I know they've been, been in communication with some of those neighbors in that Lakewood subdivision. And also just provided an elevation in terms of, you know, just how limiting those buildings to single-story, how that might look. They will also supplement with additional trees. So ultimately, next slide, please. There's only a single neighbor who sent back an opposition letter. Yeah, that's okay.
This is it?
Net forward, please. Thank you. So two in agreement, those are the commercial property owners to the west, and we've got that, that small retail center. And thank you. And then you've got another small retail center that is being developed right now, that I think Pop Donuts and then a couple of the retail spots are gonna move there. And so staff is recommending approval. This is a planned development, so additional conditions could be added. And so here are the conditions. It includes the 20-foot vegetated buffer. Also, learning, I think, from developer to the north, prohibiting restaurants along the residential side of the neighborhood. And then just our typical conditions for a planned development. PNZ voted seven to one and the one in opposition. And I think she's very neighborhood focused, and I think it's just a concern for the neighborhood, even though none of the neighbors came to the meeting. So any questions about that particular zoning case? Next one. Yes, sir.
The vegetative barrier, is that going to be basically what's already there? They're gonna leave 20 feet?
They're gonna, yeah.
Or are they gonna rip that out?
They're not gonna touch that 20 feet. And most of it, and actually, if I've got the aerial.
That looks like cedar.
You can see, it's very solid. Just with the exception of here, where you might be able to preserve a tree with 20 feet. And, but they would supplement with additional good-sized trees, so, so that it would be a solid stream from day one.
Okay, very good.
All right.
Cedar's good for stuff.
Yes.
Sorry, cedar realm, leave it alone.
You don't, yeah, you don't want cedars unless, unless it prevents you from seeing your name.
But anything will do.
Absolutely. Okay, Hogan Road, this one is very straightforward. This is just a resolution. An amendment to the plan development site plan. This is a 2004 plan development, and a little over a year ago, you may recognize this site as one in which an apartment complex was approved. And so it has since been sold to Church of Latter Day Saints, who wants to build a church like the one in the bottom left-hand corner. This is pretty straightforward. I mean, you know, they're, they're doing 55% landscaping. I mean, it's pretty amazing. And so we would, and of course, we've worked with the applicant on this to keep the relevant 2004 ordinance provisions in place, fencing and screening. And let me just show you, screening would apply to the east, the south, technically the west as well, but we're supporting an exception there. You may recognize that location as future Hog Pen Creek, essentially Greenway Trail. We own that. It's in the, not on the flood plain. It's in the floodway. And not to mention that they've got acres of green that they provide. So adding trees there actually would then just block you know, perhaps create a safety concern, but for the trail, you know, block people from, on the trail from seeing into beautifully landscaped property here and vice versa. It really doesn't benefit anybody. So we're in support of that. uh property here and vice versa. It really doesn't benefit anybody. So we're in support of that exception. And those are our two items at the entry point.
This is very similar to when the apartment complex came. The zoning was in place from two thousand and four. So this is not a rezoning. The the use is allowed just because it was a PD back in two thousand and four that required a site plan to be approved before development. The only thing you're looking at today is site plan. The zoning is already in place.
Churches are allowed in any zone, correct?
That that is true.
So that is, that's absolutely.
Neighbors are very unhappy with the thought of an apartment complex, though this is such a nice change for them. And I'm sure that they're embracing it.
Well, keep in mind too, that because because this is a site plan approval, I mean, they certainly had an opportunity to comment, but it's not the same way with the zoning case. We didn't notify within two hundred feet. It's not a public hearing. But if the neighbors were concerned, we certainly would have heard and and probably you all would. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to Councilor Graham's question regarding um brush and bolt before we get into this next item.
So Mayor and Council, you do have an item on your regular agenda to consider uh some additional updates to the brush and bolt program. I asked David if he could uh re uh remind us, even though it wasn't that long ago, we talked about it, remind us uh the uh the uh purpose of the changes that we're making and um some options for um the tweaks that that you have uh on your agenda today. And then I know one of the uh most, most um concerning things for uh for you all um and and our residents was communication. So I also have asked Heather to give um an update on how um her department would uh update or would communicate these changes. And she has a couple of options for you in terms of if we move forward with the changes uh immediately as proposed on the agenda tonight. Or if we wanna consider doing some additional public outreach before making further changes, she has kind of two options to present to you. But David's gonna cover it as if he's moving forward with the changes tonight.
I think Brian pretty well covered it. So just kind of a reminder, prior to July of this year, uh, our our brush and bulk collections were twice monthly, so twenty-six collections per year. And in July, just a a little while ago, we changed that from that twenty-six to once quarterly, so four, four collections for each type of of waste, one for per brush, four for bulk. And at that same time, we had a contractor uh come in and they did a full sweep of the city to pick up anything that was already out. They wrapped up on this past Friday. Uh, collected just shy of nine hundred tons of uh brush into three. Um, and spent just shy of about nine hundred hours doing so. Uh, we, starting this week, we are in week one of a new system, which is a call-for-service system. So just wanted to give you some kind of insight as to what we received in demand for calls for services this week. We had three hundred and thirteen total requests for pickup. That's a hundred and seventy-five brush collections and a hundred and thirty-eight bulk collections, which is is just shy of about fifty percent of what we had marked as the capacity for this week, based on initial truck availability, uh, days of operation, and so on.
How many, how many trucks are available right now? I know that contractor came in to get some time to get our trucks those that needed to get, uh, you know, preventive maintenance or whatever done, done. So how many trucks do we have that are ready to go as far as we know?
Six, five? Out of five today, we've got two that are anticipated either today or tomorrow to be back in operations. And then uh remaining, that leaves us four more. Total, they include our our reserve trucks. So those remaining four are in line to come on within the next two weeks. Correct?
Did the, did the call-ins, cause I'm I understand on the call-ins, we were gonna have the the person taking the call asking them what is in here and where are you putting it, making sure they have the right products. So did that help? During the pickup or was it?
We're, we went ahead and took all the collections that people called in for, but we're educating them as we do. We're not, we're not turning away service.
Okay, so you didn't tell them you can't put your refrigerator, but you tell them next time.
We did, we did tell them, but if they put it out, we collect. But we didn't have a fridge out there, for your point, but.
I spent um a little while at our customer care center last week and um did a couple of the calls in that that were coming in. So they have a series of questions that they ask and ask the um the resident who's scheduling to confirm, you know, that whatever their scheduling meets our requirements. And so someone has to answer yes to those questions and then do it anyways. But, you know, we're trying not to be punitive, so just more education at the beginning. Um, so they they were educated when they scheduled the call. But we'll, we'll, uh, you know, it'll be a process to get from where we were to where we need to be.
Did it help? Oh, you said you still picked up the stuff that wasn't conforming, but did it help? Was it less than normal?
So piles are not um from eagle anymore. You know, brushes in a brush pile, trash is in a trash pile. So that adds absolutely. And and we're only running trucks to pick up one type of pile, you know, so.
I was more, and I know what we're doing there. I was, I was wondering how the education on the home was working. As far as what we had to pick up.
Yeah, we we still have some some ground to cover, but uh separation of piles is a huge step one. It's gonna be incredibly helpful for this team.
I was gonna ask Heather if she's going to add anything. She's online, but go.
So three hundred and thirteen total pickups. You said that was about, so about six hundred?
So seven hundred and twenty is what we had per lot available for the week, per August fourth through August the eighth.
And the way that we determined that was because the 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 um importance that 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 has been communicated is that we need to provide a reliable service. So when you say you're gonna come get it, make sure that you do that. Don't say you're gonna come get it one day and then it's still, you you don't deliver. So we took the number of trucks that we that we knew we were gonna have available. Each truck can make about sixty pickups a day. Um, that's, you know, so uh including the time it takes them to to go and and uh either to the landfill or to the uh brush site. So um and then we uh we assumed four days of collection so that the fifth day, Friday, um, we could, if if all of the days, if all the first four days had filled up, then we could have had Friday to go back and collect anybody whose pile we couldn't have we couldn't get to because it was non-conforming and they needed to fix something. So instead of saying, especially since it was brand new, instead of saying, this isn't right, you need to fix it, and then reschedule and wait another week or two to get back to it. We were gonna go back on Friday. And then also just a buffer, just in case a truck we were expecting to have when we scheduled it, you know, something during that week occurred. We we wanted to prioritize making sure that we were coming to collect that pile the week that we set. So we did five trucks times sixty collections a day times four days of service. And that is the number of collections that we were going to schedule out. Obviously, we didn't have that many residents call in, but that's what we felt like we could have served if if needed.
That's good. It'll be interesting to find out over time, assuming that this is a normal volume, et cetera, et cetera. Um, be, uh, I'd be interested over time to see what efficiencies you're gaining, you know, maybe fuel costs, labor costs, truck wear and tear, et cetera, et cetera.
We've got some, some slides to touch on some of these things that they're thinking forward on.
I hope it's a good, I say I think it's a good system. I hope it turns out to be a good system.
I'm with you. Yeah, I mean, we uh just the the last two bullets here, we received a lot of feedback, as you all are well aware, that uh that was too drastic of a cut services. So what we have here is a reconsideration of how we can build from where we are to to where we are currently. One thing I wanted to share with you, there's a lot of information on this slide. And uh, a a lot of hours have gone into making sure that we're we're accurately presenting data here. But from a service perspective, uh every city is a little bit different than every other city when it comes to this. Um, garbage and recycling, that's pretty straightforward. You gotta do it or you don't. You do it weekly or you do it bi-weekly. So uh, those are there just kind of for a comparison of what other cities are offering. When we get into bulk and brush collections, there are many cities that offer weekly collections, but maybe you have the cost of that service as such that it's it's not very enticing for someone to do use that service, or they're limiting it to um for example, if you look at Cedar Park, uh, when you look at at brush collections, what Cedar Park does, you know, in Temple, people put a brush pile out and we use a claw to pick that brush pile up. In Cedar Park, you're required to tie your brush into small bundles that weigh less than uh fifty pounds. So you get twined and you tie that up nice and tight like a veil of the twigs. And you can have up to seven total items between your bulk and your brush together. So that could be a piece of furniture in six bundles, or it could be a piece of furniture, two bundles, and four bags of grass clippings. Uh, or leaves or anything like that. So each each one of those is an item. Uh, they they cap that total count. Um, you can see some cities maybe do more bags or bundles. A lot of folks in the brush collection area particularly are, they're really catering towards collecting what would be considered like a yard waste twig, you know, a stick fell in my yard and I need this stick picked up. Uh, so I'm gonna bundle it up with a another handful of sticks together and then you can come by and grab it. There are a handful of cities that are also moving towards what they call a green waste cart. Uh, similar to what we have, we've got a recycling cart, we've got a a garbage can, and then some cities are moving to a green waste can. So you dump all of your leaves, all of your grass clippings into that can. You can throw sticks in there if you need to. And then that can gets collected uh weekly as well. Um, some cities, Round Rock had an interesting take on this with uh, they charge charged by the pickup for brush. And it's a twenty-five-dollar mobilization. Assuming it takes less than five minutes to pick that up, it's twenty-five dollars. If it's more than five minutes to pick that up, it's a dollar a minute. Every minute after that, which, yeah, that that brings on a whole different set of uh concerns if you start looking at at something like that. Uh, the other column on the far right, what you see there is uh landfill pickups. And in some cases, like Colleen, for example, they they don't have a landfill pickup, but they do offer uh free drop-off at their transfer station for citizens there. Um, capped at three hundred pounds and it's a monthly uh monthly drop-off that they can do with the utility bill, similar to what we offer uh with our landfill drop, the during the utility bill, get your one one dump free. So there's a lot of information here. So let's pause. If you've got any questions about what anybody's doing, um, it's all fresh on my mind. So you're ready, happy to.
So that twenty-two fifty charge, that's one thing I've asked about in the past is is um who, I I I don't think that twenty-two fifty actually shows up on the bill somewhere, does it?
Twenty, is this twenty-two fifty? That's, that is the bill that you receive for your solid waste collection services. So that's your garbage, recycling.
Okay.
And and others.
Okay.
And that's the same in in the columns, you know, that's what we tried to do here when comparison from the rates for other cities is make sure we were were keeping that uh that same format. So that's, that's the monthly base bills. That's what somebody adds. And then if they have another special collection, then there may be a charge on top of that.
How much is an extra trash, uh, extra just regular trash can?
Seven, seven, seven dollars a month?
So it looks like that puts us like fourth the most expensive out of ten.
If you look at the median, uh, the median of these cities, it's about twenty-two dollars. Twenty-two and and a little bit of a change. So we're, we're a median there, you know, and when you do that, your discount, say, Marcus, at thirty-five dollars, which is is significantly higher in your discount. Uh, Brian say at fourteen fifty. Yeah, I'm not quite certain how they keep that low rate, but um.
They have an electric utility.
Right, that's likely it.
Other house prices are also a little bit higher, so they get to collect a lot more regular taxes on them.
Brian isn't as bad as College Station. Brian's a little bit closer to us.
The other thing we'll talk about shortly, you notice in the landfill column, there is a a piece that says plus two bulky days at solid waste complex. And that is a new program that Justin's proposing that is a basically a half-day on a Saturday. Roll-offs will be at solid waste and uh folks will be able to think of it as a spring clean and a fall clean. New one, one in the spring, one in the fall. And allow folks to come dispose of zolki items if they need to. Uh, not just pour them and throw them in a roll-off and then we'll we'll haul that stuff off.
Aren't we putting roll-offs around town?
We are.
But they are.
And I've I've got a slide here towards the end to talk about kind of the, some of these other things that we're doing that may be flying under the radar.
On our garbage, do we still have a program for senior citizens like or handicapped people like Helping Hand?
We, we have a, it's called a tub out program that uh if you have a something, something that limits you from being able to pull your can to and run the curb, then our drivers will stop and get out, go get the can, dump it, and then they'll take it back to the house.
And that's no additional charge?
No additional charge.
I think I do wanna point out, and I talked to Justin about this the other day. I had a lady who was on the tub out system, yeah, who's called what the Red Hand Program. She said that she was um, that her driver would get out, come to her, you know, come up to pull the can to the truck. He would open it, look in and see that there was some wigs or, you know, brush and bulk type stuff. And then he would reject it. Now, talking to Justin the other day, evidently that that use, that's an old policy. The new policy is that can be included. So as council members and anybody, and and I think maybe even in communication, um, I think that it's smart to be sure and let everyone know that those small items, the the brush and bulk type stuff, right, trimmings or whatever, they can go in the uh in the black can uh with no problem.
Correct. Okay, how how old was that? When we were not supposed to do that? Cause I do it all the time. It's how I don't have brush and bulk pickup. I didn't know you weren't supposed to.
I'll be honest, it wasn't a writ policy. It was something that my drivers just said, you know, we have a brush and bulk, we have a garbage. And those guys didn't want to guard the twigs in the truck.
All right, so we need to add.
We can.
If it's not there.
And make sure people know that, cause if you got a little bundle of sticks, you can put in your trash can. We don't need, we don't need to send a big brush and bulk truck over there.
Yeah.
So this is, this is similar to uh what we talked about the last go-around with this, just kind of the the goals here as a reminder is to to maintain a manageable service level, something that meets the needs of the citizens. Uh, is reliable and able to be accomplished regularly. And uh then also still meets that intent of what bulk collections are for, right? Not everyone has a pickup that they can throw stuff in and go to a landfill. So sometimes you just, you need somebody to come get it. And uh we wanna make sure that we're we're leaving that opportunity there. We wanna make sure that recyclables are getting recycled, so we're not just throwing a stack of Amazon boxes on the curb and uh throwing them out with the bulk pickup. Those can be recycled, let's go ahead and recycle them. And uh keep everything in the in the proper waste stream.
I think a big thing is to not use the bulk trash service as overflow for things that you need to put in your can.
Yep.
Right. So as we, as we move forward, what with the proposal we have uh on your agenda tonight is a, instead of a quarterly collection, moving to a monthly uh allowance for collection, still using a calls, call-for-service model. Uh, still requiring the piles must be separated. Um, encouraging folks that can place items in the bin that would fit in the bin easily to go ahead and throw those things in the bin. Uh, yard clippings, if they're placed out as a a brush collection, do you need to be in compostable bags? If they're put into a trash sack that that becomes trash, if they're in compostable. If they're put into a trash sack that that becomes trash, if they're in compostable. Uh, yard waste bag, then that can can go into a brush stream. As we talked about continuing education on non-conforming piles, so whether that's mixed together or whether that's yard clippings and plastic bags. Whatever the case may be. Uh, we need to to continue education and. At at some point, you you start to make that move from you educate, 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 educate. And then you have to enforce a little bit as well. So if if we see a continued long-term issue, then that that could potentially spark a code violation.
And the call-in service allows us to differentiate between someone who is um. You know, needing an education opportunity because it's their first time using the service versus someone who has habitually violated. The uh, service requirements and been educated and keeps doing it anyway. So you don't have to have a one-size-fits-all policy because. You, we will have the data to address problems and educate where people are making the mistake just because of a lack of awareness of it.
Our plan longer term is to continue the available slots week by week based on. Lead availability and projected lead availability. Uh, we want to make sure that however many slots we offer to fill up, that is a reasonable number that can be collected. To to make sure that we can deliver the service. We'll talk a little bit about process in a minute. But it's just kind of giving you a picture of the resources that we have.
Before you get off that list, I'm gonna ask a question. Okay, so help um, help us understand the difference between. We can brush the brush. But can construction materials, two before, stuff like that? Be picked up at any time by the city on a call-in basis?
If it's a, if it's construction debris, it should be. The intent is for someone to order a roll off and dispose of that construction debris.
If it's half a trailer load that I had to repair a fence at home. No big deal. I went to Blingfield Lumber. And um, and got what I needed and I have, you know. A conforming sized pile, that's construction.
That currently is not allowed under a bulk pickup by the ordinance.
The idea is that if you're a do-it-yourselfer. That part of doing it yourself is disposing of it yourself. If you are not a do-it-yourselfer and that, you know, you don't have the equipment or the capability to do it yourself, that. You need to make sure that in your contract, you include waste disposal as part of what you're paying for that fence to be replaced. Um, and that we're not supplementing um, commercial uh, with uh, with. Uh, you know, resident taxpayer-supported services.
Yes, no, that's great. Just want to be sure.
Uh, I know that I and and one of my. I guess failures on this is I didn't realize a a lot of the bush, the bulk that I see that's. That's out a lot at the same houses. You see a construction truck that's a remodeling company that's in their yard and they're just bringing home stuff from, I know that happens because I see it. Every day a lot, or I used to. So I I want to stop back, cause that's not fair to the rest of the citizens that are just paying their trash bill for to be. Subsidizing these businesses like that, so.
They load it up, haul it to their house.
And again, the call and call for service and the data that provides us. Well, help out this anguish between. Someone, you know, got neighbors together and, you know, they helped them fix the fence and there's some, there's some. Wood planks out there versus every month, you know, you have a pile of construction-related debris from. A contractor, so, you know, not uh. Part of the reason that we got to where we are or we were is because we let everything happen and we just, you know, we just picked it up. Regardless of whether it complied or not. And so I think that we we have to focus on getting to a place where we enforce the requirements. But we don't have to be draconian about that. We we can start with education. And again, if somebody is doing something because they just didn't know any better, that's different than kind of habitually and regularly. Intentionally violating, um, you know, and there's a, there's a several different examples of, you know, whether it's the contractor who brings. You know, their waste home or it's, you know, the resident that as soon as the pet, the uh. Trash uh, the the pile is picked up, they put something else out. I mean, y'all know those those situations that. The folks that go dumpster diving or, you know, curb collecting and then they bring what they don't want, you know, out on the curb. That affects every, that affects the neighbors around them. That's not the intention of the service. The intention of is, you know, to get rid of waste that that you have in your, in your normal course of of being a household. And I think that we can, I I think we can get there. The call, the call for service lets us keep the data where we can enforce where needed and be flexible where needed.
Thank you.
So just a- as we talk about uh, reliability and resources, so part of this. There's been questions asked about how, how did we get to quarter initially, right? So when you look at what's available, so on on an ideal day. We have eight front line trucks that should be out picking up uh, brush and bulk. The way that we're designing our weeks to be planned, Monday through Thursday are typically collection days. Then Friday is set aside for operations like moving. There's a. Large brush pile at the solid waste complex that has to be moved to a composting facility. So we have to, we have to do that action. And then in addition to that. Anything that is a recollect during the week. So again, our our mindset here is that. If we go by, somebody has a non-conforming pile on the curb. We can write that up and say, you know, this, this doesn't conform, you mix your brush and bulk, please separate these items into two piles and give us a call. So ideally, that person gets home that evening and they see that and they say, oh no, I I mixed this up. So they separate those two piles. They call us and then Friday, then we can, we can have those re-trips. So that we can go out and still have that collection done within the week that it was originally promised. They've separated their files. They probably know from that point forward then that that it's gotta be separated and that helps them long-term. Helps us long-term here and it it still allows that service to be collected during the week that it was promised.
Thank, thank you for that. That's helpful for the citizens, I think, uh, not being. Trying not to be jerks about it too, so.
So that, that being said.
The other thing, I'm sorry, David. The other thing about Friday um, is, you know, not everything that the brush and bulk truck is gonna need to collect. Is gonna be in front of a household who schedules a service. So when, you know. We don't want this to happen, but we know illegal dumping is gonna happen. We know that there's gonna be. Um, something placed in a house that doesn't have, you know, have an active account, which is. But you you get what I'm saying. So it also gets us capacity to go, cause I I I mean, I understand, y'all tell me if I'm wrong, but I understand. That, you know, y'all's desire is um, for us not to just have that, you know, staying out, you know. Forever and ever. So we we also are gonna need capacity. For those same trucks to be able to, that that's the equipment we have. So we're gonna need capacity for those trucks to to be able to address. Non, um, you know. I guess code compliance issues, if you will.
Do we have a mechanism if somebody doesn't realize how we're doing things now and they're sticking it out without calling and it's there to pick that up on Friday? But to educate them on. You need to call next time. Do we have door hangers or something for that or?
I think a- as we get into this a little ways, so week one, it was hard to make those kind of promises. But as we get weeks of data in. It it's definitely possible that somebody calls on, say, a Wednesday. And says, you know, I put this out here and I didn't realize if we don't have a full week that week. You may be able to to get it in. If not, then the next week they can get on that schedule. You get out, pick it up. But that, that type of flexibility comes with time, I believe, and as we we get data and. How the system operates and where we have free time at, we can start to get a little bit more flexible and. Kind of some semi-last-minute collections.
And Mike, if your question was more about if someone, if 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 we end up treating it as a code compliance issue. Because someone didn't know that they needed to call for, you know, how how do we communicate that? You know, it it will still need to go through our code compliance process so that we have, you know, we we have uh. We followed the process that that we have to follow and that we have the data so that we, again, we know if this is a one-off thing that. Uh, is um. You know, it happened once, let's collect it, no big deal, let's not worry about it. Or if it's, okay, this vacant lot is getting dumped every single week. Then we're gonna need to to bring our nuisance abatement team together to say, okay, what do we need to do to address that from? Becoming an ongoing problem. So whether it's, you know, enhanced enforcement with cameras or something like that. So we, the i- if it's not, if it's not going through a brush and bulk process and being scheduled by the customer. Then it would go through our code compliance team. Not, and I'm not saying that in terms of a citation, but just in terms of addressing the issue, tracking it. And um, and it could end up in a citation if it if it continues to happen, but that's not, that's not the first step.
That's different.
Another thing about Friday, it's it's great to have a few hours at the end of the week. Have the foreman inspect the truck, clean the truck, you know, look at it a little more closely. Than he would if the morning before you go there a full day and sit and things like that.
One more question. One conforming brush and one conforming. Bolt, free pickup per month. So I could have two free pickups. Two, as long as, okay.
Which is.
The one doesn't replace the other.
Right, yeah. So as we we talk about trucks, when we talk about trucks, it's. Sixty stops a day per truck and that's whether it's a brush pickup or whether it's a ball pickup, that's one of sixty. So in in what is currently ideal, we have eight trucks operational. Sixty stops a day, scheduling for four days a week. That allows you nineteen hundred roughly stops per week. Seventy-six hundred stops per month. We've got just under a hundred thousand stops in any given year at that time. So where where this system does start to get. We we don't have enough data yet to determine what the utilization rate of this service is citywide. But what we can say is that if you look, again, everyone takes, this is based on roughly thirty-four thousand. Accounts. So everyone said. I want my brush picked up and I want my bulk picked up once a month. That's sixty-eight thousand per month, which is significantly more than seventy-six hundred. Per month that we can pick up with eight trucks. So based on. This top number. And utilization rate, we're we're in the ten to eleven percent utilization is what we can cover. Based on one pickup for each service per month. For a year. So if if everyone in town. We can pick up about ten to eleven percent. Of uh, of the city with eight functional trucks in in any given month.
So just to to highlight that, you know, uh, the question about. Why did you recommend quarterly in the first place? What happens if we change to monthly? The priority is on, the priority that I had originally heard was on reliability. Make sure that you can come get it when you say you're gonna get it. The data point that we don't have is utilization. We've we've never done it this way. We've never collected any data regarding utilization. So we have no way to tell you if we think it's five percent or fifty percent. You know, I think it's safe to assume that not a hundred percent of our community is gonna set out a brush pile and a bulky item. Every month, twelve months out of a year. But I don't know, we, I cannot tell you if it's five percent, if it's fifteen, if it's twenty, I I don't know. So in prioritizing uh, reliability and making sure we had enough resources to cover everyone. We we landed on, um, I landed on a quarterly recommendation. Because, you know, that that number that David is showing up there is based on twelve, twelve of collections a year. So you. You could assume a higher utilization rate and still cover that service with the eight trucks that we have. Um, so that I I just want to be really clear with that because I should, I don't know the utilization rate for brush and bulk. Going forward. And so if that utilization rate starts to peak over that ten percent. Then, a- and again, that's based on everybody doing brush and bulk every month, right? Not not one or the other. So then then we may, um, we may start to have issues where we're lagging behind, where we're having. And 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 also understand, we're not gonna lag behind in terms of. You told me you were gonna come get it this week and you didn't do that. What's gonna happen would be. We don't have any more slots for next week. You're gonna have to wait till a future week. That that's what's gonna occur. So the person will still know. When to, it's gonna get collected and have that reliability, but it could possibly be just a longer wait than than we want. So I just want to be really clear with that, that the more you, the more frequency we allow the system to have, the more. Uh, the more potential for those slots because they're they're finite, cause uh, we, that's just how many trucks we have. Um, so uh, we will uh, you know, obviously be collecting the data going forward. But we have no data historically to to have any understanding of what the utilization is.
Back with with this, other than the fact that only, that you can only do one brush or one bulk a month. We're still back to twenty-four, a potential of twenty-four a month, I mean, a year.
The other, uh, and and that's what's on the agenda, for if you, if you. Approved exactly what's on the agenda, you would be approving twelve brush, twelve bulk. Obviously, there are other options. You could do twelve brush and leave bulk at quarterly, you know, so there there, or you could do. Every other month, or, you know, so it's it really, it's really up to you. We just wanted you to know. This is, this is the resource. And the data point we don't have is utilization. So it's just, it's an unknown. And but that is what's going to, that that's the needle on what's gonna move, you know, how um. How how many collections we'll be able to do.
You know, it seems like the the utilization may go up some. Higher than the three thirteen because the contractor just finished the loop. So some folks that didn't call in, they just got their stuff picked up in the last week or two. So it seems like even if it went to five hundred or so. Then you're still well within your ability to pick up.
Yeah, I don't think the first week is is probably a good indication. Uh, a lot of people probably still don't know that, you know, the system has changed. And again, I mean, some people have had literally. Days before had their, you know, their pile collected. So I think we'll need to get a little bit more into. Uh, the pace to really get good, good, good data. And the other thing about this, this program is unfortunately, this is a seasonal. Uh, 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 this does have seasonality to it. So in the spring. Uh, between, you know, just yard work and spring cleaning, when, you know, folks clean out their garages or their, you know, spare bedrooms or whatever. You're gonna see peaks and uses, it's not kind of a flat. Everybody uses it the same, um, the same, um. At the same pace every, every month. So, you know, again, going forward, when we have better data about that. Something that we can si- can consider budgetarily is maybe instead of adding, i- if if where we're, if if. Ten out of the twelve months, we are doing good with our eight trucks and our, our, assuming you go monthly, monthly collection. But then, you know, March, April, maybe we have a a spike and then, I don't know, you know, and again, this is not the. Take storms out of the, you know, big, you know, tornadoes and things like that. Take that out of the equation because we do. We we would have a different response if uh, if it's a disaster-related event. But if, you you know, it's po- we we have the possibility of bringing in contractors, you know, to to help. Um, shave peaks off if it's really a peaking issue and not a consistent use. We just don't know that, we don't have the data right now to be able to say what. So I just, I I I just wanted to be fully, make sure everybody. Fully, fully understands, this is how many we have. We don't know how, what the utilization is. We are, um, we we've heard the feedback that we wanna make sure we're reliable. So, you know, the uh, assuming that stays the priority, we will be scheduling. To the amount that we can, that we can collect and and if the utilization goes higher. Then the wait to have that collection will go longer. That will be the impact.
One more thing. What about, uh, cause this happens frequently, um, what about evictions? And that trash pile sits out there in front of that, you know, because I know there's a requirement, right? Once, once people's stuff ends up at the curb because they've been evicted, there's X number of days, I think, that they have to. And then, I mean, sometimes that's a whole household.
Yeah, it's a problem.
And they're, if they've been evicted and they didn't move their stuff, they're not coming back.
Or so always, and it it might be a disgruntled record. Or so always, and it it might be a disgruntled record, just throw all their own stuff out there.
Yeah.
So Bubird had one-on-one black foot.
Right. Randy, my question would speak to this.
No, for it.
Okay, uh, so one-on-one black foot was not an eviction, I was misinformed this again, it would, I don't know what happened. And somebody put all their stuff out in the lawn. And it was just.
That's what I was gonna say. This has like a marital dispute.
No, I, we had, we had an issue with the household. Uh, there was something. Something wasn't clicking with the person that lived there, and then they moved out, and then we had somebody purchase the house. Who is from out of town, so whatever happened, somebody threw all the stuff out on the lawn. Code has to give by law ten days before we can, you know, we we sent the letters immediately. Monday was the tenth day, we pulled a warrant Monday. We we got it cleaned up uh, Tuesday by mid-afternoon, which for us is really good. If solid waste had gone over there, brush and bulk. They would not have been able to get all the stuff anywhere. So uh, we called Justin, he dropped the roll-off as soon as we got the warrant, and we were there to pick it up.
So for evictions.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we do, that we are required, you know. Landlords are required to set the stuff out by, and and the ordinance that that you guys adopted a few uh, weeks ago specifically addresses eviction. But landlords are required to to set the stuff out, so they have to leave it out. Uh, but then after they leave it out, they, it's the property owner's responsibility then. If the renter doesn't come and take it, then ultimately, it's the property owner's responsibility to come back and either. Dispose of it in a way that the br- you know, collect it in a way that it's it's a proper collection for for bulk. Um, or get a roll-off to put it in, or put it in, you know, if it fits in a ninety-five, you know. Well, i- it's the, the property owner would then be responsible for um, taking whatever the renter didn't. And if the property owner doesn't do that, then the code compliance issue comes up and can be abated with, uh, you know, through that process. Um, but but the way that um. It it. While the, while the property owner has the res- brought responsibility of allowing the stuff out for the renter to get. They retain the responsibility of cleaning up after them once they have collected whatever they they do or don't. But there is unfortunately a time period where, because of state law, that it's gonna sit, that we we really don't have any opportunity. And it could be longer than ten days, again, if if that person, that that property owner sets it out and then doesn't. Come back and collect it or or take care of it, and the code compliance process starts, then it's not necessarily right on that. That that wasn't a, that wasn't an eviction process, so that ten day.
Can I add also that that we have been in touch with the county? And I think we've spoken about this, Mr. Mayor, or maybe I, maybe I'm wrong, but I I think I told you this at one point. The county lets us know. We're supposed to let us know when there's an eviction, so we try to be there when they are evicting someone.
Because that's where the landlord goes to evict.
That's correct. That's right, I'm sorry, yes, the the county goes with sheriff or whatever. With a couple of guys or who at whomever, and and they they haul all the stuff out. So we are trying to be present when they do that to make sure that what they're hauling out does not wind up all over the yard. Winds up in a, in the neat pile that can then be addressed, and I I I think there's some other stuff going on.
Can I ask a question then? Is it possible that we schedule the roll-off to be there when the eviction takes place? So it goes directly into a container, is that?
They have to have accessibility to it, no, the renter has to be able to go and get their stuff.
Okay.
The my my point is, we're doing what we can to mitigate the mess, unfortunately, as we all know. If you get a pile of stuff on the curb, people come, start picking through it, and then it grows, and then you all start getting, oh, I start getting. And for the blackfoot one, just to be clear. I did not hear it first from y'all, in fact, Jessica, I think I I I think I texted you and David or emailed you and says. Hey, y'all are gonna hear about this, cause it's bad, and we're doing what we can, I wanna try to hang it in the comments now.
I I think, dude, one of one of the things that I've heard several people is, what are we gonna do in a storm, you're not. It needs to be a lot of education out there, that storms aren't counted in this, we're gonna pick up separate and um. The evictions aren't involved with this, I mean, there. A lot of the, a lot of the cases I've seen are storms and evictions is what they're talking about, that's not anything to do with this.
Yeah, we've heard about storms this week.
Uh-huh.
You know, from, ended up both of them.
So just education will help with some of that. That's what we're being, what's being said that we we are doing is not what we're really doing.
Just just to touch on the process and. The way that the call for service is working, someone calls our customer care team. And uh, they're gonna specify whether they have a brush pickup or whether they have a bulk pickup, or do we have one of each. Um, they're then gonna go through a series of prompts that's gonna, we're gonna work through, you know. Knowing that you need to separate your piles, knowing you can't set a refrigerator out or anything that has any kind of. Free on or cooling in it, uh, can't be put out. Um, no individual bags of trash, that kind of stuff. Uh, they'll go through those prompts so that the customer is acknowledging that uh, as that call occurs. And then they're going to be offered a a week range of service, so. It would say, we'll we'll pick up your, your pickup will occur the week of, this week, August fourth through August eighth. And uh, they know then, I can spend that weekend, I can have it out by Monday, and then it'll be picked up that week.
They also ask them if they want a text message reminder. And um, I would say the ones I saw when I was over there, almost everybody wanted one, so we will send them a text message. Um, to remind them, hey, this is your week, make sure you got it set out, uh, if you schedule it on Monday, make sure you remember that the next Monday, you're you're. Getting your, you gotta have your stuff out, and then when it has been collected, they get an email confirmation. They, I think they get an email in advance too that confirms their their, that it's been scheduled, reiterates the rules. Um, a text message reminder if they opt into that, and then an email confirmation after it's been collected, that it's been collected. Or if it hadn't been, why not, and what needs to be done to to have it be collected.
And there's opportunities in there as well, if somebody calls in on Monday and says, I need a collection, and they realize, and they say, no, I'm going out of town this weekend, so I'm not gonna do anything. They have an opportunity to call and cancel that service and uh, not lose that pickup, as long as they call in a timely manner. Um, on Friday each week, customer care team has been delivering the the list of pickups to our solid waste team. They're gonna go through on Friday and put that into our routing system, it's gonna develop and optimize routes to pick that up, so they're not driving. Uh, all the way to West Temple and then all the way to the southeast side of town, so we're gonna do this still in a route kind of a format. Neighborhoods should get picked up roughly around the same time. Standard collections then are occurring Monday through Thursday, and again, we're reserving those Friday. Collection days for any recollections, any kind of an overflow situation. Uh, other city operations that need uh, need some kind of a bulk pickup, anything along those lines. And uh, and additionally, it does allow for us to move the brush piles from our solid waste facility to composting facility. At the Temple Delta National Treatment Plant. Expected outcomes, this is just, again, kinda. Uh, solidifying our goals, we're hoping that this provides a more predictable service. It gives customers a better ability to understand, you know, I can get this done within a week. Uh, it should lower our maintenance costs over time. We, it it'll give us a little more freedom to make sure that we we have specific maintenance days in in that Friday buffer time. Uh, we would reduce curbside trash piles with that, and then hopefully, we will improve our recycling program as well. Uh, with this service. Couple of of, a few additional items just to to keep in mind, uh, like Councilmember Bokey mentioned. Uh, we have certain things out there like our dumpster drops, neighborhood dumpster drops, that uh. We do regularly, see here, there's there's eighteen planned dumpster drops this year currently. And that's typically a roll-off that sets out on a Friday afternoon, and then it's gonna get picked up on a Monday morning. Um, and then anyone that's in the area can go and throw whatever they need to in that that can. Uh, we hope that they do that within legal constraints, so they're not throwing cans of paint and tires in it. Um, and we actually do have a tire trailer that sits out there with it as well, so that. Rather than somebody throwing it in the stream, it's gonna cause a problem, we can at least gather it in one spot. And uh, and now that it's gonna be disposed of properly.
Where do, where do we, where do you find out where those are when?
We have a, on our website, we have a dumpster drop page, and it has has a schedule of those dumpster drops as they occur.
Is that being put out on our Facebook page or anything?
They go up very quickly, if I remember correctly, so usually by the time we post them, they're. The neighborhoods utilize them a lot, you know, as well, we do promote that in the Facebook event.
And Bubird's team and uh, my team usually, I'll find they will share the responsibilities of that. Um, mostly Bubird's team, but have to clean up around the dumpsters on them. Just cause so many people utilize it.
The intention was to hit each one of those original eighteen neighborhood planning districts one through the year. And that's, that's how we schedule out, so every neighborhood gets one dumpster drop and and a tire trailer as well, uh, on five.
There is a nice banner that's displayed on the dumpsters when we put them out, that has the website as well, so if they wanted to see the schedule of the things, they could do that.
In addition to that, we offer our annual household hazardous waste cleanup, so this is a time when when folks can come dispose of those cans of paint. That uh, we don't want going in your trash can or in a roll-off. They can dispose of the old electronic equipment, uh, refrigerators. Freezers, anything that that requires some form of remediation before it goes to landfill or its ultimate ultimate destination. Um. We do offer uh, unlimited is probably a a little bit of a liberal term there, but uh, we offer folk. Folks could come drop brush off regularly at our solid waste complex, Monday through Friday. They can pull around and they drop in the pile in the back, and again, as long as you have your utility bill and you can show. Cause you're a citizen and you're you're paying your utility bills, stated kind of, sorry. The the brush rack off, it's also allowed for pay terms. So the commercial guys that are trimming trees at the park, they can get rid of it for free.
They just have to haul it.
They just have to haul, yeah, haul it.
So don't let them tell you otherwise.
We offer the same type of a service at the solid waste con- complex for document shredding. So again, someone can bring a box of documents they need to to get shredded. And uh, we have a shredder there that that they can shred those, we also, this Monday through Friday. We also offer document shredding events uh, on Saturdays twice a year. And uh, again, your monthly trips to the landfill, and we talked earlier about uh, bulk days at solid waste complex. Uh, concept that Justin came up with that, uh, I think will will help kinda alleviate some of this household disposal as well. And uh, so we we try to make sure that we have these kinda add-on services that uh. They're free to our residents, they're free to folks to to come use, and uh, it can help them. Avoid having to have those extra calls for bulk pickup or brush or any of those other items. That's the end of what I have in the presentation, if there's any additional questions for me, I'm happy to, happy to entertain.
Responsibility is it to? The vacant lots, so Eastside has a lot of vacant lots, so there's a lot of dumping there. Those responsibilities, is that, is that code or? Uh, waste, solid waste.
And be, when it gets vacant.
So are they driving around or are they relying on the residents to say? There's a dumping on such and such, which is what I did, but. Do they just ride by and say, okay, we'll be, come back and get this, we marked it off?
Inside, so it's the, the property owner has the first first responsibility there. If it's your property, somebody dumps on it, as a property owner, you have some responsibility to uh, to remediate that. Now, we do in in many cases end up aiding in that service as well. So it's it's typically a code enforcement action, Bubird's team, either through patrol of a a neighborhood. Or through a call that someone has made that said, somebody dumped on the lot next to me. And you can take a look at it, so his team goes out, they work it just like they would any code case. And with, as with any code case, our our goal is to uh, clean the situation up. You know, it's, our goal is not to look for ways to to get property owners so that we can uh. Give them a ticket for something, so the goal is to get it cleaned up, so Bubird's team. And then sometimes in those cases, in conjunction with Justin's team as well. And they work with the property owner to figure out the best way to get that cleaned up and uh. And get it done, but but we we do not have an active. You know, somebody that just sees a pile and says, that's a private lot, we can pick that up, that that's not part of the service that they operate. We do go through the piles to see if we can get identifying information, hold responsible, whoever put it there.
So in the instance of someone's bulk didn't get picked up prior to this new system. What are we doing there? Because when they're calling in, they're they're told that. They can't get it scheduled and it won't happen for another month. Here, it won't, it won't be picked up, and then they'll have to pay. So uh, as one particular street, which is a dead-end street, none of their bulk got picked up in the last couple of weeks. And so now they're told it's not gonna be picked up for another month.
Who told them?
Call center.
We had, we we had vacant slots.
That would be their first call there, yeah. They called and they said you can't get it picked up for another month, even though that's the first time they've ever called ever.
They were told it, they're done with that area, it's not gonna happen.
There there was a period where if we had already swept a neighborhood.
Yeah.
Uh, say they were the first neighborhood, one of the first neighborhoods on July ninth. The the contractor came through and picked that up. We did not resume normal operations until August fourth. So the first available pickup would have been August, the week of August fourth, which is this week.
But they started west, right?
They started further west, I believe, right? And then East Temple was some of the last. Last group.
There, there was a few groups that in Area Eight, far east side, that did not get finished by the contractors. But my guys have been doing that this week.
I'll be there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
That'd be a rain trip?
We'll do it tomorrow. But if they called in, they shouldn't have been told to be another month, they've never called before, ever.
Yeah.
I can, Heather, can you speak to the?
I'm trying, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, that that's not a true statement, we are not telling anyone that it's gonna be a month. Uh, we had the availability for pickup this week, all the way through Tuesday at five P M. That's when we, excuse me, cut off taking calls for this week. Um, and right now, we are scheduling for next week, so anyone that calls that needs brush or bulk picked up can get on the schedule for next week.
Heather, how many are we up to for next week right now?
Seventy. They, the the requests have started to pick up, and we're getting more a day. Um, which is understandable, because it's been a a couple of weeks since the contractor was in certain areas. Uh, so we're we're getting more per day, but we are up to seventy right now, I would estimate we would be at about a hundred and. Thirty by Friday, so it'll probably be the same situation that it was this week. Where we'll allow people to call even through Tuesday, and as long as we still have those slots available. We can book them for next week during that week.
Do we know how many is of those seventy are brush, how many are bulk?
Um, I can tell you, one moment.
This morning, when I looked, it was fifty-three.
Um, for next, yeah, next week, uh, thirty-nine are brush and thirty-one are bulk. So far. And it's been kind of interesting to see the number of cancels, um, I think we ended up with twenty-two people that canceled last week after they had scheduled it. Um, and then we have had a, I would say more than a handful that we show up and um. Their pile is already gone, so either they haul it off or somebody took it.
Not only the interpretation, I mean, as I think more through this, I don't think the interpretation at the resident level is that this is a reduction of service. And I get that, right? I mean, one is less than two. But at the same time. It's appearing to me that it's a more convenient service, because with the old service. It's appearing to me that it's a more convenient service because with the old service, if it was done right. The city was asking residents not to put the brush pile out until two or three days before their pickup day, right? And um, I think personally, I think my pickup day was on Thursday or Friday. Well, I didn't have time Wednesday night to move it out there. So I did it Saturday. Right? Saturday or Sunday. So my stuff sat out there longer than it should have on my regular, you know, twice a month schedule. And for this one to be able to call in, put your brush out and have it picked up in the next week, you know, within a range, right? Both in the next week. Other, to me, it's, it's a better service. There is maybe a small lack of convenience with having to actually pick up the phone, make a phone call. But other than that, super easy, right?
We are also working on a um, and uh, Heather can give an update on this as well. For people like me who would rather not talk to anybody on the phone. Uh, is a app or web-based request that will do the same thing. You know, you have to answer the same questions, but you don't have to talk to. And even though Heather's people are so nice, I'd rather not talk to anybody personally. So. We are working on that as well. And I think, Heather, do you want to give an update on when you think that might be ready to go live?
I do. I have a um, a quote in my inbox right now for adding the scheduling app to Salesforce. Which is the C R M tool that we use to schedule these. Um, and so that would allow us to set a limited number of, you know, based on truck availability. It would set the number of pickups available and people can self-serve and schedule those. Uh, and once it's full, it shuts off and it'll move on to the next week. So I have that in my inbox right now and uh, our implementation partner says they can have that. Um, up and running for us in two to three weeks if we move forward with it.
That'll be on the website and on Text Connect.
You'll do what?
We'll put a button on the app so they can use it in the actual app.
Okay, yeah, not a link to the website.
Yeah, like, like Mayor said, I, me, this is like calling an Uber and getting them to come. They're telling you when they're coming or waiting at a bus station until it happens to get there. I actually thought people would like that part of it.
You have a presentation from Heather um, on communication.
Thanks, David. Anything else for David before he steps away?
Thanks, sir.
Alright, well, thank you all for this opportunity. Thank you, Bryn as well, um, for allowing us to talk to you about, um, we have a couple of options. Um, including the communications plan along with those. I wanted to start off and talk to you about where have we been? So since June ninth, we have communicated some pretty big changes or updates for our solid waste services. So starting June ninth, we did um, a full comprehensive communication plan to communicate the route changes that were made. Um, and then on July third, we communicated the city plan. At that time, the ordinance change was not approved. And so we did say though, that we would be communicating a new version of bulk system coming. Um, and then lastly, July seventeenth, we moved to quarterly collections after that ordinance change was made. Um, with like Bryn mentioned, a goal of providing a more reliable service. And so where are we now? Well, we've received some negative feedback on quarterly collections and that's okay. We're gonna talk about that. Um. If you think about when you go out to eat and you have a bad experience, you're more likely. To maybe leave a review about a bad experience than you are to leave a positive review. Additionally, I don't think you're all negative. I think sometimes people maybe just don't have all the information maybe, or lacking information. Or looking for more information. So.
A lot of the black people going to a restaurant complaining about food, but hadn't eaten there.
That is so true. That's a better analogy. Actually, thank you. So in my opinion, I think we have an opportunity. I think we have an opportunity to be strategic. Um, I think we have an opportunity like David and Bryn and, and Justin have mentioned to collect some data, to get some resident feedback. And um, to just build trust or enhance trust um, amongst our residents. So we'll talk a little bit about how we can um, do that. Um, I also wanted to note that from a communications perspective, ideally, we would like to have a few months of education before any type of change. Um, for, be- before a major change um, for something like this. And I only put that in here because. It kind of helps me go through my communications timeline that I'm gonna show you later. Um, if you look to the left, this is the graphic that we posted on July seventeenth when we made the ordinance change. And that little red uh, rectangle shows six hundred and ninety-two comments. Um, and that is a lot, like I said, but um. We have a hundred thousand, nearly a hundred thousand residents. And so I wanted to show you and remind you. That although, although we do receive negative comments, we also receive a lot of positive comments. And this one over here was just a couple of days ago. And she even said, kudos for trash recycling being picked up same day too. And then some of these other ones over on the right are within um, a few weeks or a couple of months out. So I just wanted to help maintain perspective and um, uh, use this as a reminder. So I'm gonna show you guys a video that also kind of justifies this principle. Um, it's only one minute long and then we will continue on. I think this just helps again, kind of um. Um, reinforce the message of, we've only heard from a small portion of our community. And part of um, my recommendation is today that we solicit feedback from a broader sample of our communities. So option one, um, and um, my recommendation is that we, we don't know what we don't know. And so I would recommend a strategic pause. Um, I would recommend a um. Continuing with the ordinance, the way it is written, the way it was originally changed. Um, to gather feedback, gather the solid waste feedback, or sorry, the solid waste data that we all have. Um, and to get scientific, statistically valid um, surveys responses from our residents. Um, and then again, we want to, we want to build trust with our community. We want them to know that they can depend on us and the decisions that we're making. So um, the communication timeline real briefly, um, is, would take us through the end of the year is what um. What this one would be. So starting in August, we would start prepping the survey. Um, we would work with the survey company and strategy and innovation to do that. Make sure the questions that we're asking are um, uh, helping to meet our needs and our goals of the type of information that we need. We would ensure broad representation and again, it's just a statistically valid sampling of our community. Um, the way that they do that is they put out a neutral message to say, hey, do you want to help simple be a better place? Sign up. People sign up, um, they look at the age, the race, the gender, the area of town that they signed up from. And then if they need to, they go out and try and fill in the gaps um, to ensure the, the um, broad representation of the community in that panel. Um, so we gather the data, we would communicate the process continuously. Um, and then in November, we would be done with the survey. We would review and analyze that data as well as the data collected and from the solid waste team on their side operationally. And then we could identify key messaging based on those survey results. Um, but also the key messaging would include our operational efficiencies and the capacity that the solid waste team would have. Um, again, communicating that ongoing process and encouraging people to attend the council meeting. Um, if they didn't get to participate in the statistically valid survey, they would have, have an opportunity at the council meetings to provide any feedback that they have. Um, and then in December, we would share the key messaging based on those survey results again and the operational data that we collected. Um, lastly, in December or January, depending on timing. And if changes are proposed, we could um, do a council workshop presentation over the survey results, the recommendations moving forward. Um, and then we talked a lot of in here about public education. We would continue that campaign really, really heavily. Um, we would talk to people about any behavior changes they need to make and, and all of those types of things to look out for. Um, this is just from my brain, basically, um. Like I said, we would use um, str- strategy and innovation and flash vote to help us develop survey, but I'll just walk through these really quick. So we would ask what neighborhoods you live, live in. And the reason that's important is because it'll help us know. Is there a certain area of the community that maybe has um, is having more issues than another area? Or is there a certain neighbor, neighborhood, maybe or area of the community that is feeling a certain kind of way? Maybe there's a certain sentiment in a certain area. Um, the second question or thing that, that we need to hone in on is what's most important to our community, reliability with frequency? So is it more important to our residents that we are reliable and we pick it up and we say we're going to? Or is it more important that we just come more often? Or maybe they don't have a preference. The last question is shown as one question, but I would break it up. One question for both, one question for both the items. Um, cause like they were saying earlier, we don't have utilization data. And so this is one way that we could get that over this time period. Um, and just ask how much, how often do you typically require it? I know for me in my neighborhood, we have a more mature neighborhood. We have a lot of trees. So for us and for me. Brush pickup is a lot more important than bulk. Um, I don't have a lot of bulk in my neighborhood. I personally don't use bulk that much. So um, maybe we have different frequencies or different cadences for those collection types. Um, so as far as data-driven decision-making goes, we talked about the survey data. Operationally, some of the data that we need to help make an informed decision on what um, what we can handle capacity-wise. Um, is the number of calls received through the customer care department. Um, the truck maintenance. So how many truck issues did we have in that quarter? Uh, how many ma- how many times were they maintenance and things like that? And then lastly, was there an increased usage? Of the other services that we offer. David had a really great slide that showed all of those things. Um, but that includes the landfill drop offs or dropping on items at the solid waste complex. Um, so these are just some examples of things that we want to take, that I would recommend taking the time to collect over the course of a quarter. Or at your discretion. Option two, and this is our communications plan. If you move forward with the ordinance tonight to uh, do monthly collections. Um, if we do move forward uh, with that uh, change um, at the first reading tonight. Um, I think it's important that we address why the change is happening and why we're going monthly. So we'll be prepared to do that. Um, ideally, we would like to encourage residents to attend the council meeting. So we would encourage them to attend the second reading of um. Of the change. And then uh, like I mentioned earlier, just continuing education, managing expectations. Um, and making sure that people are um, are well-educated moving forward. So then this is just um, the timeline of monthly collection and what it looks like is pretty straightforward. If we um, have the first reading tonight. Um, we would uh, post that. We would encourage people at the second reading, like I said. The second week would um, really just look like just some general education. We would probably do an infographic or some type of video. Um, to make sure that people understand those changes, especially the part about what's included in their utility bill. Um, encourage them to attend the second reading. On the twenty-first, we would have the second final reading. Um, and then we would notify, notify the community of that change. And again, just continue public education on all the various things that we talked about today as well. And then we would do a let's talk simple video. Um, we have planned to do one of those regardless of what the change is. Um, to educate the residents on all of the, all of the new guidelines. And that is it. Be happy to answer any questions.
On the slide you just went through, you said posted. So you're talking Facebook?
Yes, sir.
What about uh, putting notifications in Telegram?
We can do that as well.
There's a lot of people that don't look at Facebook, but.
That's very true. If there was a, if this, when the second reading is done and it gets approved, we would go a little bit more comprehensive. We could do something in the telegram or we'd also discuss doing a mailer just to notify us one of the, the final changes in rules. Uh, but we would need to make sure that that was really solid and there wasn't gonna be any anticipated changes as well. But we would be happy to do some kind of communication as well.
Yeah, I think we're gonna need to be pretty curious about that.
And this was just a snapshot. This is not a comprehensive. I didn't show you all the tactics that I didn't see. It's a, it's a lot.
We put something out in writing about this change or was it just social media and our webpage?
About the quarterly change?
Yes.
Are you talking about the reading tonight?
No, the one that, the ordinance we passed the other night.
Oh, okay. The timeline was very tight. By the time that we had gotten involved and it was already in motion. We were advised initially by legal to be careful with verbiage about things potentially getting approved. Because it can be insinuated as kind of pressuring council to approve a change. So Heather had mentioned when we had discussed the, the environmental cleanup of citywide suite. We had mentioned that we will be supporting new service and we had a couple of questions, but overall people were more concerned about the citywide suite. So we had kind of put a feeler out there, but we didn't. We didn't have enough opportunity or time to really e- educate the public on what the proposed change would be. So, and we wouldn't have that opportunity this time either, unfortunately, because.
But right now, the only way that people know that right now they're supposed to call in for it is social media.
Oh, no, we did a, we did, so our email blast that goes to essentially every resident that gets the email bill. We have, I think eighty thousand. Uh, members subscribe for that. That's our highest engaged tactic for communication is our email. So we did media release, we did email blast, we did social media and we did, I know I'm missing something else. Um, but we continue to do education and we have that timeline for continuing the education beyond.
There was an article, the telegram also.
I saw an article about it. It wasn't us. It was.
We have more time to build out a, a plan, especially with print. Because there's a whole district, I mean, you have to get it printed from the printer and then you have to distribute it to where you want to distribute it. So that, that piece takes a little bit more time, but it is definitely something that would be useful for this type of.
This one in particular, especially the water bill, because it's also the solid waste bill.
And a good example of everything that we can do with more time would be the recycling and garbage change. Because we had that full month, we were able to do two weeks of getting materials in, getting those door hangers and then have a whole month. To educate residents. So we were able to do a lot more. And that's our ideal situation is having more time so we can really get the word out and do those printed materials, do boots on the ground. Literally touching every single door. Um, so that's, that's ideal. Uh, but with things moving so quickly, it's, it's difficult.
It might have been look best. And, but I can see the people that don't do social media and, you know, I mean, they saw the dumpster fire article. But they didn't see any of our stuff about it. And how, how do they even know that they're supposed to call in now for their brushing bulk clean?
Yeah. The good thing is every um, utility customer gets one of our uh, digital newsletters. And then for the bigger things, if we have time, we can work with Heather McIlless and her team to get it into the U V O insert. But I think that's like a two month. It's like, it's a, it's a big, um, because of how they send those off to print. They're sending out bills every day. So we have that in the cycle. So, yeah, so that, putting it in the U V O inserts is definitely a good option.
And I think I mentioned this to mo- many of you when we have talked in the individual. But um, Heather and her team have done a great job with the situation that they were handed. My um, mistake here was probably moving too fast and I wanted, you know, we were having an issue where we were, we had people's. Step on the curb for weeks and weeks and weeks. And so um, I had a bias for action. And probably didn't take the time to um, to get, let them catch up with the communication plan that they need. So that's on me, that's not on them. They can do a great job of communicating the changes. Um, but they, they need the time to do so. And um, in my bias for action to, you know, get this not happening, what was happening, which was just collections. Sitting on curbs for weeks at a time with no end in sight. I, I didn't give them time to communicate like we should have. So that is not on them. That is, that is on me.
Well, I for one pushed you because when you first mentioned the call, uh, can we start next week? Cause it's not working what we have now. So. Uh, I understand why we did it, but.
And definitely the first rollout that y'all did with the trash collection on the same day was really well received with the door hangers and the signs in each neighborhood. I don't think there was any pushback at all. So I'm sure, you know, give them a little time that you educate these folks and, and they'll embrace this as well.
Our goal is always to meet people where they are. So if that's a door hanger, a mailer, getting. Our goal is always to meet people where they are, so if that's a door hanger, a mailer, getting something physically in their hand, again, especially for a major change, such as this with um old gifts.
The door hangers were how I. Well, I, I knew our other change, but the door hangers, I mean, that definitely would have pulled me. Otherwise, but, but I know we didn't have time to do that, that had to be a major undertaking to hang a, hang a on every door in town.
But we can do it again.
We can do it again and whatever the change.
Once we figure out what we're doing.
Yes, yeah, right.
That would be the goal, is to continue education.
Yeah.
Real, real quickly, Green, could you share some of the solid waste information with council you shared with me this morning regarding miss?
Yeah, so in the month of July.
Here we need to get moving.
Okay. And, and this, the, I, I think that I was over at customer care like a day before the month ended, so. Unless we missed a lot of collections the last day of the month, this is, this is pretty accurate. Um, we um had missed uh um under six hundred collections that had been called in and reported to us, that I'm talking about. Curbside residential curbside trash and recycling right now. So um, you know, we started the uh new collection sk- uh schedules. Uh, the beginning of the month, so there was four full weeks of service in July. Um, that were um under the new collection uh s- schedules and routes. Uh, we had um just shy of six hundred missed collections reported to us. Um, I believe there was uh around a hundred of those that we had documented reasons for why the collection was missed. So it was either the can wasn't out and we had a, we had, you know, a photograph demonstrating that. Or the can was blocked in some way that prevented us from being able to make that collection. The others, they're either, i- it was just a a miss because we missed it as we were working out pinks or. Um, there, maybe there was a reason, but we didn't document it, so it's, it five hundred uh were, were missed with no um. No documented reason for those being missed, so. Um, again, there's thirty-four thousand, just shy of thirty-four thousand residential co- uh collections a month, times four weeks. So I, I believe that is, uh mayor, what did you say this morning, less than one half of one percent? Now, granted, I think that I know uh, I know a handful of people, uh just, you know. Personal friends that have said my collection was missed and I didn't call anybody, so that's the six hundred. The six hundred would, you know, that, they had to have called us for us to know. Uh, but I do think that if people had been, had the trash missed multiple times, it, you know, mu- multiple cycles, they probably would have called. So I think that pr- that maybe that first week, there was more that just didn't report it because they knew we were, uh, we were working through uh some challenges. Uh, but that based on the data that we had, that, that people who called and said, I, uh, you missed my collection, there were six hundred in the month of July. Uh, uh, there, thereabouts, um, I believe uh we've had three days where we were uh delayed in finishing a route. And finished it the next morning, um but didn't, that didn't roll, that didn't affect that day's routes rolling into the next day. Um, so I think that is um incredibly better than where we were at. We still have truck maintenance issues, we are still working through uh that and, and need to continue to keep the uh the pace up. And getting our fleet back in an operable condition. Most of the new trucks have arrived from the residential side, so that's positive, I think we're still waiting for one. Um, but um obviously not all of the trucks are brand new, so we still, we still have maintenance issues on some of our ol- older ones that need to be addressed. Uh, but the new trucks, of course, have made a significant difference as, as well as the routes. Did that cover what you were looking for? So, um, I, 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 we're still, and Justin and his team, you know, they're, they're obviously working really hard. We still have work to do, but I think we're, we're on a pace for um improvement.
It's good.
We have not worked a Saturday. Month and a half. For since July.
Yeah, very good, great. New trucks make a lot of difference. Very good, all right, Stacy, ready? All right, moving on to um the next item. Uh, we'll have Ms. Hawkins provide legislative update on the Aiden Mount legislature first called set.
I think uh, you know, mayor, collapse, a couple of times Dr. Kim admitted about this. You essentially called me the bringer of doom and gloom. More fun, um, the uh governor uh called special session that began on the last one first, so we are. Close to the end of that, ours thirty days. Um, these are the items that the governor included in his uh priorities for the special, special section. Blood warning systems, flood emergency communications, you can see them all there, I know we're present for time, so I'm going to kind of just. Hit the highlight for the ones that are important to um for that might most impact the city of Temple. Um, the number six, cut property tax. Uh, number ten, banning taxpayer-funded lobbying. And then number twelve, um there's something on police personnel record, which I talked to a man in the city attorney's office and she actually thinks that is a, a positive thing for us, so. Um, those are the things that most would impact us. Um, from the governor's perspective, lieutenant governor, um his are very similar, so um, let's see, there is. The cutting property taxes, Senate Bill number nine, the other one here is uh Senate Bill number twelve, banning taxpayer-funded lobbying, so. And fourteen, uh, it's the police personnel, so they're saying same kinds of things on both of their lists. Uh, I'm not going to go over all of these uh bills, but I'm going to pick out a couple that are important to us. Um, that reflect those priorities from the governor and lieutenant governor. Uh, there have been three hundred and seventy bills filed, uh, we are tracking about a hundred and fifty of those that are city-related. Um, the, the ones of note that I want to talk about real quickly, Senate Bill nine um is from Senator Benford. And it lowers the multiplier used in the voter approval tax rate formula from three and a half percent to two and a half percent. Um, the Senate is still, I mean, if you, if you haven't uh been living under a rock, you've probably heard that the House Democrats are not in Texas right now. They broke in forum uh because of the uh districting effort going on. Uh, the Senate Democrats are still um in forums, so they're still in town, so the Senate is still working. So Senate Bill nine actually passed the Senate yesterday. Uh, Senate Bill twelve by Senator Middleton um is the one on taxpayer-funded lobbying. And so that one has also passed with the Senate. Uh, one of the things I will say with, with what has gone on with the Democrats at the House um leading the state, it's really put a halt to everything's um moving through. So some of these bills from the House side, they've been referred to committee, but the committees have met. Um, and so nothing's really happening there, um, let's see. Um, House Bill one fifty-eight by Representative Pickland, um, that is to eliminate, we saw this one in the regular session, so that's a lot of what we're seeing. Is some of the ones that were bad in the regular sessions have re-up there, uh, the heads back up again for us. So bill eliminating the use of the unimpressed uh rate in the Texas property tax calculation. That's another one that's out there, again, not moving, it's been referred to committee, but not moving. House Bill one fifty-nine, also by Re- Representative Pickland, um, that bill is something new uh for. Uh, that would require efficiency audits for um political uh facilities that Heather P. has exceeded the new revenue tax rate. Um, so that's a, a new one out that I hadn't seen before. Um, the next one, House Bill one seventy-five by Representative Trossler, is another bad bill, I think we talked about this a little bit. Um, there were some uh of these types of bills that were filed in regular session imposing and or imposing annual expenditure limits for cities. And again, that House Bill two oh nine, um generally, that's the way it works, you have a bill filed in the Senate. Um, on an issue and then there's a a companion bill that's filed in the House, and so that one is on the uh political subdivisions, you see. Um, being able to hire taxpayer uh funded, using taxpayer-funded lobbyists. So, that is, that's really all I wanted to cover, like I said, there's a few um bad bills out there that we're watching. Um, but right now, nothing's happening, I had a conversation with Snapper Carr yesterday. Um, on focused advocacy and what he is hearing is that they um potentially are actually going to call an end to this special session on Friday. Um, but then the governor's going to call another one, so, which really starts this whole process. All of these bills have to be repiled, so those three hundred that have been filed or three fifty, whatever it was, would be repiled to restart the whole process over. Um, the thing that I've noticed so far um about the special session and what um, what I heard from Fred, um, Jan, our other uh lobbyists. Is that things move really, really quickly here, and so for instance, that Senate Bill nine, um, which was the lowering the um. Percent from three and a half to two and a half percent, that bill was filed on a Wednesday, the hearing was um posted on a Thursday, the hearing was on Friday. So it was like we had to um really move quickly to advocate for ourselves there, so. Um, that's, that's what I'm trying to do, is really keep a close watch on all of these bills and again, like I said, if uh we call another special session, then this will all start over again. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's where we're at.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Council, thank you, Stacy, before she says sound, sorry. You're good, okay, thank y'all. Next item is to discuss proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six business plan. Including the not limited to the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-six and the budget and certified tax.
Mayor, I know that Tracy has some presentations prepared. Um, I've also asked uh Wilson, our data uh administrator, to be uh prepared to go through um. An analysis he did for me uh related to solid waste routes and projecting what our needs would be. Because one of the things I'm going to ask uh you to consider in this budget is to approve additional solid waste routes. So I want you to understand where the um, the recommendation for that came from and make sure that you feel comfortable with that um, that position. You'll notice, uh, I'm sure as you read the packet, that tonight you do have an action item on the agenda related to the budget. And it is uh setting a proposed tax rate. So just as a reminder of uh or education piece on that pro- on that point of the process. Tonight's action item doesn't adopt a tax rate, it simply sets the highest tax rate that you'll be considering as part of the remainder of this process. So tonight's tax rate that you set, again, it's not adopting that tax rate. You can adopt a tax rate at that level or lower than that level, but not above that level when you make that decision later this month. So tonight's action item is only the proposed tax rate that sets the ceiling for the tax rate that you'll consider setting. Last time that we were here, um, you asked, uh, you gave some feedback uh a couple of weeks ago, which feels like an eternity ago. Um, at this point, uh, I can't believe it's only been, maybe it was three weeks, we had a, we had an extra week in there, was helpful. Um, so you, you gave me direction that you wanted to see a budget proposal that was based on a tax rate that did not exceed seventy cents. Um, we talked a little bit about um the, the possibility for um adjusting existing fees. As well as the possibility for adding new fees for service. And we talked about the priorities that you wanted to see funded within the budget, uh particularly for twenty twenty-six. What you wanted to see uh kept as a priority for continuing to move forward in next year's budget. What I heard from you was that uh fire personnel was important, police personnel was important, fleet personnel was important. An additional assistant city manager was important and police and fire compensation adjustments were important. I, hopefully I got that right, that's the feedback that, that I took back from you. We didn't really talk a lot about solid waste at that particular meeting, but uh using context clues. And my uh intelligence, if I have any, I'm going to assume that keeping us in a, in a position where we have routes to. Uh, that we need to serve our growing community is important. So in the budget, uh, that proposal that we have to cover uh with you tonight, um, I believe that we have an option that needs, that, that. I think we did what you asked us to do, we have a tax rate that's at propose that's under seventy cents. We have those things covered, tho- those, the, the police and fire compensation adjustments. The uh staffing in fire, staffing in police, staffing in fleet, staffing in solid waste, and staffing in city manager's office. Something that you didn't specifically say, but I'm concerned about and left uh in the proposal is a plumber. Because uh the plumbing resource that we have used to maintain our buildings, we anticipate that, that, that gentleman is going to be closing his business. And that we won't have that option moving forward, so we really have an option of e- either increasing contract services. Or bringing on an in-house plumber, but doing nothing, I think, will put us in a bad spot in the upcoming year. So I do have a plumber still proposed in, in uh the plan for twenty twenty-six. I also have the positions that were covered by of some other form of revenue, so. If it wasn't a general fund supportive position, uh ta- uh, a property, you know, tax-supported position, so if it was. A position covered by, for example, reinvestment zone funds, but that is budgeted in the general fund, it's still in the proposal. Because removing that removes the revenue that you get for that position, so it's really a neutral, you, you can't, that revenue is tied to that specific item. So if you remove the expense, you also remove the revenue. I do have some information that I want to go in at for you, uh, with you in more detail. Um, you also asked us um to prepare um information uh on how the city of Temple, the factors that we face. Are like or different from other cities of our life size uh in our, in our general region. So we have some benchmarking information that I want to share with you today. Uh, but before we go to any of those details, I'd like to pass over the, the mic, if you will, to Tracy, who will go over the certified tax rule. Because that will guide the remainder of our discussion um related to um where we uh will be with taxes. Uh, and tax rate and what that will allow us to do from a resource standpoint. Uh, so if that's acceptable, I'll ask her to, to cover that portion of the presentation at this time.
Yes.
All right, in, what was it, um, July twenty-second, we received our certified uh tax rule. Uh, just wanted to look at what it is from the city of Temple, the exclusion reinvestment zone. It showed uh ten point one billion dollars, uh eight point two percent increase over the prior year. And I just want to note too, as we, when the role certi- certified, that's a point in mind. And there's uh corrections, adjustments, uh, it wasn't a hundred percent certified, there were still properties under protest when they certified. So immediately, you know, there can be adjustments, they have not, and they, they do those adjustments by releasing what they call a supps, a supplement. And right now, today, for last year's role, I think we have supplement one hundred and eleven. But they haven't released supplements for the FY twenty twenty-six, but we know of adjustments that we found. Let them know that they need to be changed, I got a baitment one applied, um, something was coded in the investment zone that needs to be coded in general fund. So when you do that, it brings a enrollment of ten point one four seven million, an eight point three five percent increase. And over the past ten years, the tax role has increased to ten point three two percent. Uh, this is that same data at the start, uh, again, it. The goal bar is certified and the view is what we see it as of today. Reinvestment zone, um, in their values, we did find something that was coded there that shouldn't have been, plus. Uh, a baitment was not applied, their certified was one point six billion, uh adjusted, as we seen it, to one point five six seven billion. An increase of fifteen point three five percent, average annual is eleven point five three percent. I think it, all you know is, one of the big projects that come on a year and then. Not as much one year, so really the average. Um, it's hard to forecast just looking at historical averages, we, we try to forecast based on actual big uh econ- known economic development brackets. Again, same data in uh bar, bar short, uh, I can't talk today, bar chart. Wanted to look at total uh new market value this year, the significant value of six hundred and fifty-one million dollars of new value. Um. And y'all have heard this mentioned, I know, multiple times, but Panda One, their abatement expired this year, it comes back on the tax roll. And so that shows up as new value. Um, and then we had a good bit of new value in the re- reinvestment zone. But looking at the, what made the new value, we had the forty-three percent conversion. But looking at the, what made the new value, we had the forty three percent commercial, single family twenty seven percent, a pretty high increase in the multifamily, and then land and lots. Total market value of single family at forty seven percent, commercial industrial at thirty two percent, on around totally exempt property of eight point seven seven. Now, what did this, see what that looked like the past two years? I've seen a slight shift to more to commercial and more multifamily. A little bit of shift there and lower, lower in single family, more in multifamily, and more in commercial industry.
Tracy, what makes up the totally exempt? Churches?
Churches, government districts, Scott and White, Mayor Scott and White.
City temples.
City of Temple.
Disabled veterans who qualify for a property tax exemption.
The VA, the building with the VA.
You want to know exactly, Mayor?
Yeah, that's just.
And it includes abatements? Maybe I have abatements separate there. No, abatements is not, it's, it's by itself.
Is that, is that an amount of total exempt? Do you have any idea where that stands, you know, on average with other communities? Or I think it'd be fairly high, right, with the large hospital system, two large hospital systems. I just wonder where that falls.
We didn't collect that data on our benchmarking sheet. We did collect the specific related to the disabled veterans exemption value, so we could get that, but we don't have that right now.
Yeah. I think it would be a little higher than average. I'd put low, so.
I mean, that's what makes up the three point three billion in exemptions, or total exempt. That in detail. Interesting, pollution control. And no payment on one and two, they had a big exemption to that, that. And then it went through the lawsuit with state, and they disallowed a portion of it. Now, at the bottom of this, maybe twenty five loss of value for disabled vets is six hundred and thirty one million, six hundred and thirty one point three billion. That's an increase of a hundred and one million compared to the 2024. All right, nineteen point eighteen, nineteen point eight two percent in three hundred and ten properties, so significant increase there. And then I just asked that, this is the map that you see, to just, where those totally red are the hundred percent disableds. As Brandon mentioned, tonight's council, or tonight's council lead in votes where you discuss the proposed tax rate and you vote on the proposed tax rate, but it's not setting a tax rate, it's the highest you could go without resetting these other fates of, of how you would approve the tax rate and budget. You know, go ahead, go ahead and chat.
Yeah, thank you.
Budget, tax rate adoption process, process and timelines for required meeting dates, documentation and notices, motion language are governed by state law, treaty taxation, and by the city charter. Again, this calendar, tonight's, we have the items, we just take a vote of the proposed tax rate in August twenty one. First reading approving the tax roll and levying taxes. First reading setting the tax rate, and then final adoption, August twenty eighth. We have received our final calculations for prior year property tax rate, or these are the true taxation rates. The prior year rate was point six two six five. Our, this year's no new revenue rate is point six one four four. The voter approval rate is point seven nine one two. I know you'll have some questions on that. And then Stacy mentioned that the bill that we, that would eliminate the unused increment. We have unused increment for the prior years of one point two cents, and that would take it, and that's it's in dollars, not necessarily rates, but it's what you didn't use in the previous three years that you could use in future year rolls forward. And that's what the, the bill would eliminate. Have you ever used that or had that unused increment?
Yeah, there was some talk whenever the three and a half percent first came out, that every community is just going to just go three and a half percent every year, no matter what, to sort of protect themselves. And then they put in the, you know, the holdover portion. I wonder if, even if they go down to two and a half percent, I wonder if that, if, if that bill passes, what impact that's going to have on cities going forward? You know, as they continue to, especially if now you go from three and a half to two and a half percent, and you, you lose the unused increment piece, if that's just going to sort of have the unintended consequence at the legislature of just pushing everybody to two, two and a half percent, no matter what. I mean, that's just, that's just a thought. I know there's not an answer to that. But that was the, that was the thought when three and a half percent was rolled out years ago, right?
Right. And, and historically, no, we have not, the city of Temple has not adopted up to that rate. And then, but then there's been a year or two that we have used the unused, portion of the unused increment the next year. I usually do a bad job of trying to explain this, of trying to get it in writing, simplify it. What is the no new revenue rate? It's the rate that would yield the same revenue as last year on the same properties. And the basic formula simplified, you take last year's levy minus lost property, property that rebates or refunds, different things that wouldn't be, they're not here this year that you had last year. You divide that by this year's value minus new property value. Meaning you get new property adds new revenue and not, it doesn't go against the no new revenue rate. And then the voter approval rate is the maximum rate allowed without voter election. The basic formula, again, simplified, is you take your no new revenue M and O rate, multiply it by one point oh three five, then add your debt rate to it, and then any unused increment. So that's with your debt rate, if it's, it's voter, or it's approved, either by voter approved, GO bonds, RCOs that's went through the process to be issued and levy a tax rate on. And choosing a rate above the, the voter approval rate is an automatic voter election is required. Adopting up to or below the voter approval rate, no election is needed, though there could be hearings depending on that it exceeds the no new revenue rate. So why? Why is our voter approval rate so much higher than our no new revenue rate? Well, in the fall of 2023, we took through the vote room, called election, took to the voters to add the half cent sales tax to reduce property taxes to go for just general revenue purposes. It would not, it did not increase the tax rate, it was just, if it would have failed, things would have been this, you would have continued, it wouldn't eliminated the tax, the half cent sales tax. When the truth in, truth in taxation calculations, one of the reasons we wanted to do that is you could have unintended consequences of how, because you back it, you have the voter, you take your M and O rate and you multiply it, or you add the sales, a sales tax adjustment rate to it, and this year's, it takes that half third or half percent of the sales tax collected, divides it, and then gets a tax rate equivalent, and that's about fifteen cents. Normally, if the, the old, other than this year, you added it a amount, you took a amount out. What, the first amount was the amount you spent in the previous year, the other amount was what you're going to collect to the new year. And those rates, again, volatile sales tax could have a negative impact on your, your tax rate calculations. Well, the truth in taxation laws, the year it's eliminated or applied and eliminated, for one year, you add it in, but you don't take it out. And then going forward, it's no longer like that.
So next year, those will be closer together?
Yes.
Like normal?
So again, I know that was a really bad explanation, but can I? Any questions?
Still confused. So anything under eighty, so we're, we're talking about adopting, adopting a rate of sixty nine ninety nine. But anything under eighty one, thirty two could be adopted, correct?
Without going to the voter.
Yeah. But next year, that number will be, well, the, whenever I, a minute ago, I said they were, next year will be closer together, like I, not like I really knew what was going on. But the, the no new revenue rate next year will be higher, or the voter approval rate will be lower?
Depends on your property values. If you were to adopt, they'll be closer together.
Right.
Voter approval rate and the no new revenue.
Okay.
They won't be, you won't add this.
But which one's going to come up, which one's going to go down, or will it be a mix of the two? Yeah, because of the, the fluctuating.
One will go up and one will come down, so the gap will close.
Yes, yeah, because of the fluctuation, fluctuation of property values in the one year.
Well, it also depends on what you do with the tax rate this year, because the, the less you use this year, the more, the more is going to be added to the unused increment next year. And so you can't, you, you, you don't get to voluntarily include that or not include that in the calculation. So you can decide to use it or not, but it's in the calculation. So when we haven't adopted, when we haven't used the full three and a half percent historically, that has been something that's added to our increment, and it increases the, the voter approval rate.
Right, yeah.
And, and, and the voter approval rate isn't, isn't, isn't a voluntary number. So it, it's not something that you can say, I want to send it to the voters. You, you don't get to choose when it goes to the voters. You have to do, you have to adopt a rate above the no new, above the voter approval rate in order to have a mechanism to send it to the voters. So if you did, the lower you adopt the tax rate this year, the higher the voter approval rate is going to be next year, that you're going to have a larger unused increment.
Unless Senate Bill or whatever.
Yeah, assuming that it works the same way. And I, and, and that's all we can assume, because there's a million different variations of what, you know, legislative changes. But assuming no legislative changes are made, your voter approval rate will go up by the increment you don't use this year.
So that one point two this year, that's not going to be used at the sixty nine ninety nine, right? If that bill passes, then we lose that one point two cents.
You'll lose the difference to eighty.
If it don't pass, yes, it would.
But you lose.
And you would also lose the difference, because that's the current one, the unused increment.
Yeah, whatever.
And then next year, you'll add to that, well, three, the, the, if there's anything from three years ago, it'll drop off, because if you only use it for three years, so the third year drops off and the most recent year gets added. So I don't know, I, I don't know off the top of my head how much will drop off. But anything between eighty and whatever tax rate you approve will be added. So it could, the gap still could, assuming no legislative changes, and we continue to have a practice of adopting a tax rate that's lower than the voter approval rate, then you, you'll have a gap because you've got an increment.
Yeah. So how much increment do we, say, I know it used to, about a three-year period, how much increment do we have built up?
That's that one point two.
That point one two, okay. And Tracy, towards the end of your comments, you said something about a one-year window.
It's this, with the sales tax adjustment rate that has the voter approval rate so far away, or the big delta between the voter approval rate and the no new revenue rate is of one year, it's happened one year only because of the first year after the calculation. The first year that you apply the effective date of the vote to, to switch the half cent sales tax for property tax reduction to just general revenue.
That's the part that's removed.
I don't know if this is accurate, so forgive me, but this is the way I understand it. And Tracy can say yes or no, that's accurate or not.
So don't count you.
Yes, because I've been doing budget for, I told Tracy this the other day. I've been doing budgets for a very long time. That's my, my very first job in, in local government was in a, in a budget office. So I, I've been doing this a long time, and I can do almost anything with a budget except calculate a no new revenue tax rate or a voter approval rate. That, that calculation is the most complicated thing I think I've ever seen in my life. However, the way that I understand it, again, this may be too simplified, is that previously, how much sales tax we generated was part of the calculation. Now, it's not part of the calculation, because we changed it from, from, from a reduction to property tax to just general revenue. So that doesn't do anything to automatically change your tax rate, but it changes the calculation, because one year it's in and one year it's not in. So the calculations this year are different. One, one had the calculation in essentially and one doesn't. So that's creating, it, you, you, you're playing under two different sets of rules for one year. Going forward, you know, we'll compare to this year and next year, which will both be under the same, the same scenario related to tax rate, so there'll be more apples to apples. Whereas this year, we're kind of bridging a calculation that included it and one that doesn't include it. That's the way I understand it.
Assuming you said it correctly, that, that helped clarify it, yeah.
Yeah, and I, on Stacy's presentation, when it referenced the, the bill that would eliminate the increment, unused increment, it said to simplify the calculation. The, the calculation is very, very complicated.
Yeah.
That's the part, that's not the part that's complicated, though, I beg to differ. I don't know that that part would simplify the calculation.
I know it would.
I do, I do have some, some suggestions on how you could simplify it, but that wouldn't be mine.
I just thought it was kind of complicated.
Yeah.
Because there's, it needs a lot more than that to simplify it.
Truth in taxation is supposed to make it easy for the average taxpayer to understand how their tax rates are calculated and set. And the, the convoluted system that has been, you know, because we added a piece here and we added a piece there over decades, it is the most convoluted. It, 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 not only does it not do that, I think it, I think it absolutely does the exact opposite. It is so difficult to understand, even for professionals who do this day in and day out, what those numbers mean. And even what, what they're supposed to mean, you know, again, the no new revenue rate, the voter approval rate. Well, one, one takes into account what your debt service rate is, one completely ignores it. It's just, it's, it's a, it's an incredible system, and by incredible, I'm not using that in a positive connotation, so.
Brenda, your comment in the lending business, when they came up with truth in lending?
Mm-hmm. Same thing.
Exactly.
So anything you call something truth in, alarm bells, it's not going to help, okay? I think I've actually signed some paperwork that said truth in lending, now that you mention it, that I think. Uh, no, I don't think, that does make a lot of sense.
Right.
That isn't as clear, not as clear as mud.
It really is complicated on, on what can be, the different fees, what can be added in, what, what isn't.
Yes. So that, that is probably a very similar system here. And, and each component of it has a different calculation that you use differently. System here and um and each component of it has a different calculation that you use different numbers for. Um and 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 I will say that all that uh having a community with a robust reinvestment zone. Makes the calculation even that more complicated, because part of the red, the reinvestment zone value comes out. In part of the calculation and goes back in in other parts of the calculation. One way for M and O, a different way for INS, it's it is it is the most. It it isn't, it's it is crazy.
I they like to switch between whether they're doing things with value or dollars. Back to them too.
Only.
We're near to here.
Something so helpful.
So the tax rate. Was uh the file budget included the tax rate of seventy five cents. Uh that and it was a twelve and point three five cent increase in the M and O. No change on the debt service rate. And again, after direction from council, come back with something for the priorities that Bryn mentioned. And a tax rate below seventy cents, we're proposing the M and O to go to thirty seven point five four. An increase of seven point seven eight cents, and there's a small decrease. Based on the certified values to the debt service INS rate. This is a chart to show. As we in the past. Really started in twenty thirteen, the robust capital program, the INS rate has went up. But this plan in twenty twenty five, twenty twenty or twenty twenty six, the M and O rate will go back above the INS rate. I think it's uh, Bryn, I don't know if you're going to explain it. I know on previous conversations about our CIP plan, why can't you take this to the voters? You know, and the pressure was more on operating M and O than the capital piece. We have, based on those directions, went back and looked, don't have the exact dollars yet. But looked at a plan. Where any increase to the INS. Rate above existing capacity in the future would you would have the option to go to the voters. And you pick what you wanted to take to the voters out of that fan. You know, be X dollars with no tax rate impact, but if you do this amount, these projects. It could be a package that went to devote, just I say that.
Yes, and and just as a reminder, there's there's um. In in simplified terms, there's three major types of um of. Debt or bonds that are used in the general fund. A certificate of obligation or a CO. Um has a series of items that are a lot that the state allows us to use. Uh that that can be funded through CEOs. Those are typically things that um uh at least in my mind, I think of more more as the needs, the 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 needs to do. Um then you have a general obligation or a GO type of bond. That really uh that the main difference between between a CO and a GO. Is that the GOs are directly approved by the voters before they are issued. And then the other uh type of of um vehicle that we use regularly is called a limited tax note. So that is a is a shorter term of debt, typically uh seven years, I think is what we.
Max.
Five to seven years.
The max is seven.
And we do, uh we use those routinely for major equipment purchases. Um you know, like trash trucks and things like that, you'll see us recommend LTNs or limited tax notes for that. On the GO and the CO, anything that you can fund with a CO, you can fund with a GO. Not everything that you can fund with a GO, you can fund with a CO, so that the reverse isn't true. But but right now, based on current law, things like fire stations, police stations, fire equipment, truck, you know, engines, things like that. Um streets, those are all allowed to be funded through CEOs. So you really have the choice when you when you make, you have the choice of CEOs or GOs for that. There are certain types of projects like um new administration buildings, uh new libraries. Um as two examples, conventions, facilities, things like that, that are that you must use GOs. If you're going to do them, you have to do them through a GO, if you're going to use debt to do those. Um so historically, as we talked about last workshop, we have historically taken a a policy or a. A unwritten policy, but but what the council has has historically done is um for for uh. Capital needs that have been deemed to be kind of need to do. So public safety facilities and transportation facilities in particular. You have chosen to do those through uh CO, certificate of obligations. But you have, you have, there's no, there is no requirement that you do so, you can choose to do that through a GO. So we uh we are just making sure that that you understand that that is always an option. And so at the point that you get to a tax rate impact on debt. That you want that it's at a level of impact that you wouldn't feel comfortable making that decision. Even for a need to do thing, you could send that or what need to do it. Or service type, you know, a fire station in a street, uh you can still send that. So you you have the option of, you know, what what we're trying to do based on your direction is keep it under seventy. But in the future, if you want to go above seventy, but only through a voter approval for a CIP project, you can consider that. Um but of course, future, it will depend on um the growth in our base. So you know, you may, if if we have some significant projects happen that that really increase our base. Then that might not be necessary, you may not have to um consider an increase to the INS rate to fund more projects. But that could be necessary if you want to do more capital that will fit within the existing tax rate. And and it's always your choice of whether we do CEOs or GOs, except for the things that have to be done with GOs. And then if we're going to do them, obviously, we can't do them through.
CEOs are limited in terms of dollar amount, are they?
They are not limited from a, they they go CEOs and GOs all go towards the same debt limits of um that city.
Isn't there a limit on how much we can issue a CO for?
Not that I'm.
Just thinking of it a little bit and.
Well, I'll say not, I don't think there's a statutory limit, but there certainly may be a limit in terms of. Uh yeah, bond um capacity and what the market will sup, based on your ability to pay, what the market will support. There is a statutory limit on debt, but it's debt, it's GOs and CEOs combined. We also have a charter limit, so the state sets a a limit that's pretty high. Our charter sets a lower limit, and then we self impose even a lower limit than that, just because practically speaking. It it hits tax rate, and so we we have to have that consideration.
The limit would be by the tax rate limit of what you could issue. And Bryn, I think the state's a dollar fifty and we go up to a dollar twenty charter. I think.
It is for.
But yeah, if you if you practically tried to sell something that the market won't buy from you because you you're you're not.
I've kind of that that's kind of forgotten about that, but for years, the guys that worked for me used to probably do. Write fifty and sixty CEOs a year.
Mm hmm.
And that was just bread and butter business, right?
I'm not aware, again, each a a community may have a particular limit based on their charter. I'm not aware of a statewide statutory.
I think what I'm thinking of is they're bank qualified, is a certain limit.
That's ten million.
That is true.
Twenty now, what's ten is twenty. I kind of had an aha moment the other day in a conversation with Bryn. We're talking about um. You know, the tax rate and just sort of what we've done historically. Um for some reason in my mind, I remember whenever I came on council, the rate was like fifty eight, sixty four. And then now we're up to sixty two fifty four. And then you you wonder why, if we're at sixty two fifty four, why are we considering? A sixty nine ninety nine, that's that's a pretty healthy jump. Um but then in my conversation with Bryn, she talked about basically the three revenue buckets that we have. We have sales tax, we have fees, and then we have the tax rate. And we all know that that we, the city of Temple, in the last few years, um has really enjoyed a. Nice increase in sales tax. That revenue has gone up. Um there's a lot of reasons for that, um you know, growth and uh you know, COVID was a was a big driver for sales tax. And so we, I I think that in many ways, uh not in many ways, we have uh. Used the increase in sales tax as sort of a cushion on the property tax over the years. And we funded um compensation adjustments, you know, both for uh. Uh public safety and general government, we we have really enjoyed a nice sales tax increase. And but as we all know, that's getting to flatten out some, which is okay, but um. Also, one thing that we had, we had good sales tax increase without the level of inflation that we have now. And so sales tax is beginning, although it's still higher than it was four or five years ago, sales tax is beginning to level off. Inflation is now eating up, if you guys remember last year, um we added just four or five employees. And and then the rest of the ad valorem increase went to inflation on current projects. So you know, we almost had a a what I would consider a year of no progress. As far as um keeping up with the level of population growth that we've had. And so um in my mind, and no one likes a tax increase, right? I would rather we live on the sales tax forever, right? Because then that's a choice to whether you buy something or not. But in my mind, um you know, if the sales tax is beginning to level off. Um unfortunately, it's uh you know, we have to go somewhere else to find that money. And um and unfortunately, this year, it looks like it's gonna have to be on the tax rate. Which no one wants, but we have these three buckets of money. That um that ultimately end up having the, one of those three has to fund all of the future needs. We talked about going on fee some, right? And uh so that's just um, I just feel like I kind of, that was an aha moment I had. And I hope that that's sort of an aha moment for council and because in that whole tax rate. Um that's that's only one of the three, for lack of a better way to say it, uh pots of money that we have to use. And we've we've been using sales tax, sales tax pot for lots of years, and that's leveled off and now. Unfortunately, we have to, we don't have to, but we're looking to uh do something with the. With the ad valorem tax, but we have enjoyed, I I in my estimation, we've enjoyed a nice run. Over the years of being able to use those sales tax dollars instead of ad valorem tax increases, so. Oh, that was my aha moment, really, I really did pondering that, I don't know if I said that well, but um. It's kind of where we are now.
I wish the citizens would um. Remember that, the importance of sales tax revenue for the city.
Right.
You know, we do a lot of online shopping and, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
A little more local push.
Yep. And a lot of them probably not, you say remember it, but I'm probably not aware of what him mentioned. I mean, there's an education process.
Yeah. I think a lot of people are also surprised to know that if they buy something online, that the sales tax is not necessarily credited to. The community that they live in to help fund the police and fire and other services for them, they it could be. Credited to a community hundreds of miles away because of the way that uh that um Texas has historically used. Source based allocation instead of destination based allocation, I think. If you asked a hundred people, most of them probably would assume that if you buy something online. And you pay sales tax for it, that that sales tax is going to your community. Um but it's a much more complex reality than that.
Over a hundred, I would have known. And also, I I don't think, you know, whenever we talked about inflation. You know, being in the six, seven, eight, even ten percent, we were talking the other day, in my mind. Um I remember um we used to talk about how a new police officer on the street was a hundred thousand dollars. Get them through the academy, put them in a car, um with the training per year was a hundred thousand dollars. That number just the other day came up in a meeting, that number now. In my mind, I've been spending a hundred thousand dollars, it's actually like two fifteen now.
Kind of by a cart.
Right, exactly. Now that that number has doubled. And then we needed, but last year, I mean, I remember one time at one point, she said, and I'm thirty officers behind. Well, if we're back up to not being behind, thirty officers times two 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 hundred fifteen thousand dollars, that's six and a half million bucks. Right? So. That's there's just a lot of realities this year that that are um, the sales tax can't handle anymore.
Well, and correct me if I'm understanding it wrong, but I know this year or last year and this year, our inflation hasn't been as much as it was. For a few years there, but um with the inflation and the house or the property values go up. And we have that known revenue point there, and the the city's sitting by that inflation just the same as everybody else. If we're going to build a fire station, it costs fifty percent more than it did ten years ago as well. But we can't raise our, we can't raise our rates with inflation without the voter approval, and I mean, I'm seeing that correctly, right? Am I making sense?
Yes, that's correct.
If we can only go up three and a half percent, but inflation's eight and a half percent, we can't even keep up with the place.
That's right, and that's happened over the last few years, for sure.
Yeah, and then, you know, another thing that we that we didn't have to deal with in the past that we do now, that's that's become real. We've all talked about how we, you know, we we all support the veterans and are thankful for their service, but. There is a real loss of revenue with the disabled vet extension, there just is.
State mandated.
Yeah, state mandated. And then we've also chosen.
But not state paid for.
What?
But not state paid for.
Right, exactly, not what, nevermind, I'm not getting that. And then, you know, also that we have, we have also, as a matter of policy, chosen to freeze uh sixty five and old. That's not something that we have to do, but that's something that we have done over the years. So there there are some, there are some uh real downward pressure on revenue. That historically we would have um without a, you know, committed increase, so.
I'll also say that uh, you know, I think. I forgot who I was talking to about this, but you know, if you, if you think about in your home, if you stop maintaining. Your house, if you stop maintaining your HVAC system or whatever systems uh and and parts of your home, because you're trying to save money. Um that doesn't really show up for you the next day. Maybe not even the next year, but at some point, you're going to have a more expensive problem because you've deferred maintenance. Uh you know, so something that can feel like it saves you money in the beginning. And the can come to you uh in time and really cause you. Um more expenses and degradation of the asset that you originally invested in. And so while it 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 is a certainly um an opportunity to. Uh focus just on how low can the tax rate be? But what that comes with is is issues that won't necessarily show up for us. We we perhaps are dealing with issues that are that are presented to us. Because of decisions that were made ten or fifteen years ago related to the tax policy there. Things like bridge repair, things like structural issues in our facilities and you start, you you know. Um maybe I'm getting a complex, but I start thinking, why are all of these things like, you know, these these issues popping up? And uh they don't pop up overnight, so if you if you choose to defer the issue. Then it's coming for you at some point, but it um and and by the time you get to it, you know, if you if you don't routinely. Uh maintain your HVAC systems, then you're going to be replacing them. So instead of spending the money on the technician who can make sure that you go out and you you have serviced air HVAC vents that there, that you've got. Um you you know, are regularly replacing your filters, if that uh system is functioning well and has the preventative maintenance. Then you're going to deal with more expensive issues, but it's not going to happen the next year. Perhaps it's it's going to be a while before it shows up, so um those are just things to keep in mind as we. Uh make as as we, as y'all make decisions related to, you know, to the tax rate here. Um you have a community that is growing, as we've talked. Um, you have a community that is growing, as we've talked about. We are, uh, we are amongst the, one of the fastest growing communities in the, uh, United States. But that growth, uh, unfortunately, for a lot of factors that we've talked about, you know, the, the, um, the, just the growth in property tax, uh, uh, is not going to, um, based on our projections, the growth in property tax is not going to, um, allow you to do anything additional in the future years. Like you, you won't be able, you, you aren't going to get additional revenue just because more houses are being built. That, that revenue is offset by growth in input, in, in, in just general cost, um, loss of revenue from other sources like disabled property tax veterans. So I'm not saying it's none, but it's not, it's not gonna be enough to do any major additions of personnel, equipment, um, or priorities in the future. So really, the only way to do that, uh, we can hold the line, and that means holding the line. To do any, to add anything additional, either compensation-wise for our police and fire, uh, as, uh, is, uh, recommended here this year, or positions, it is gonna require a rate adjustment. So what we have proposed today, um, in, uh, you have a, a few handouts that we've given you. Um, you had this sheet from the original proposal. This is updated based on the sixty-nine ninety-nine tax rate and no fees for twenty-twenty-six, no new fees for twenty-twenty-six, but going up by ten percent on the fees we felt like we could legally adjust, statutorily adjust, um, by ten percent, the existing fees. Um, but starting in twenty-seven and forward, it assumes that we will create a street maintenance fund where we will move street maintenance, uh, expenditures out of the general fund and create a special revenue fund that would be supported by a fee to cover those services. So not this year, twenty-twenty-six has no fees, no, no new fees, but twenty-seven and beyond would, to, to do, to do the plan that, that we've talked about would require that special revenue fund to be created and a, and an, an appropriate fee be set to cover street maintenance moving forward. Um, if, if we don't do that, then we can add what we have proposed in twenty-six, but no additional positions are likely to be able to be funded in future years. If you wanna stay at sixty-nine or under, uh, considering this year and future years, um, and you, you wanna keep the same fees we have and no new fees, then what we're proposing this year is essentially what, what we would have going into the future. We either have to increase the tax rate more or add additional, a new fee to do anything beyond what I'm proposing this year. Does that, does that make sense? Uh, because that, there, there won't be enough, there, we do not project that just increasing the tax rate to either by three and a half percent or up to sixty-nine, if that's kind of the limit, um, will generate enough additional revenue to cover anything but just normal increasing expenses from year to year. So, um, twenty-twenty-six, as I mentioned, includes, uh, police and fire compensation adjustments. It includes, uh, which is, uh, actually, let me pass this out really quickly. I'm sorry, I, I got my train of thought. So this sheet has all of those personnel in summary. If you've seen this sheet before, this is updated. It has the detail behind it, which is the specific positions. You've seen that before, but it's updated. I believe you have the benchmarking report, which we can talk about here in just a second. And what I'm gonna pass out here is some additional detail on what is proposed in the. These are, you know, this, this is taking this, um, this hefty book and trying to simplify a little bit. So it, it certainly doesn't have every single thing, but it has the, uh, major items there for you. So what it, uh, again, what it includes is, um, market-based adjustments for police and fire. Um, that is proposed at, uh, just shy of two point seven million. Um, it includes, um, ten new positions in fire, which, uh, those, uh, priorities are adding the second battalion, um, chief, uh, system. So that is six total positions because it's a battalion chief and driver slash accountability officer.
That's in this two point seven?
The two point seven is the compensation adjustment. The number above, the three point nine is the positions.
Yeah, I got it.
And those positions, those thirty-six positions, ten of them are fired. So that's, uh, that includes six personnel for the battalion chief priority, which will split the department into two battalions. That's a battalion chief and a driver slash accountability officer per shift, so total of six positions. It is two shift coverage officers, or firefighters rather. Um, we have an extra, uh, uh, one of our shifts has, uh, one more shift coverage firefighter than the other two. So that helps us balance it out and also provide that three to one ratio so that for your minimum staffing, which is thirty right now, when you add these two additional positions per shift, that will take it to thirty-two. So to keep the three to one ratio, you will need to add an additional coverage officer to those two shifts that are short. And then it includes two, uh, firefighters for, uh, two fire personnel for the fire marshal's office. So that is the ten firefighters, that, that is one of the priorities that, that you said you had. It includes four police officers, two for the training program, two for patrol. It includes, um, four solid waste personnel, three for, uh, for, uh, routes, an additional residential garbage route, residential recycling route, and side low commercial route, and one commercial operations manager. So four, uh, total personnel and solid waste. The original proposal also included three, um, swing drivers. I am recommending that we defer that until next year. I think we can make it by what you have, um, you know, again, very similar to fire because those trucks need drivers on them every route, every day. You have to have coverage for when folks are sick, on vacation, or otherwise unavailable. So what those swing drivers allow us to do is have a driver to cover a, a route that's vacant. And again, a three to one ratio is, is generally what we shoot for. This will put us a little under that ratio, or I guess over that ratio, uh, but it, uh, I think we can, we can, uh, fake that work. Uh, it includes the plumber, uh, in, uh, in construction and facility services. It includes the ATM position and the support staff associated with that. And it includes, um, I think it's three total positions that are covered by revenue from others, from other sources. So that is a, uh, a couple of positions in our engineering department that are covered by reinvestment zone funds and, uh, special events, uh, position for the community market downtown that's also covered by reinvestment zone funds. And then, um, it includes eleven personnel in fleet services to add the second shift of fleet, as well as some key positions like inventory management, service rider, things like that to, uh, to the department. Um, that is it. That is what is in the proposal in terms of new positions. Everything else is deferred to a future year. Again, all of the deferred positions though, um, it, it, it is still, um, it is, it is still required that we would ha, that we would have some, some type of fee. And my recommendation for that fee is a street maintenance fee. It is the most common type of fee, uh, for cities to charge. It has a lot of legal precedent for charging it. It has a very strong, um, it, 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 we, if we would have a very strong position in that. Um, I estimate that you would be, uh, if you were covering a street maintenance fee in the future, one thing that we have to do is it ha, is that, that needs to be a data-backed fee. So we, we are gonna have to determine, uh, based on, um, uh, trip generation data, what is the appropriate fee to charge each category of user? Um, typically, what you'll see is a residential rate set, and then commercial rates are based on a single-family equivalency of that, of that residential rate. So really simple, simple terms, if a single-family residential home generates ten trips a month, and you are gonna charge them ten dollars a month, and a office generates forty trips a month, then you should charge them four times what you charge a residential, uh, user. So you, you should scale it to the relative impact of that business on traffic generation compared to residence. That's how you generally have to set the fee. So we will need to do work around bringing a proposal that will be legally sound and be simple because some people get these really complicated systems going. So we would like to have a very legally sound system that has all of the data we need, but user interface very simple. And so that will be our goal, if, if you send us off to do that. Um, but, uh, ju, but, uh, without the full data, uh, but making some assumptions based on our actual counts of revi, of residential units versus commercial units and what some other cities that have this fee, how, how they charge it. You know, I think you're generally gonna be in a range of ten dollars a month for residential users to cover the cost of street maintenance and travels, traffic signal op, uh, operations based on current budgeted resources. You, that does not include adding additional crews or additional money to the streets, just what we're doing today. With that, that's, that's essentially the equivalent of what the general fund is, is, um, paying for the street services that are provided today. So in moving those out of the general fund and into a special revenue fund, you then free up that revenue in the general fund where you can begin adding additional firefighters, police officers, and other priorities. So that's why you see in twenty-twenty-seven, additional resources become available, not because of a tax rate increase, but because you're taking that street maintenance, uh, expenditure that's currently part of the tax rate, um, burden, if you will, moving it to a special revenue fund and setting an appropriate fee that covers that, letting you use your tax rate solely for other, uh, priorities, namely, public safety and parks. Parks can be covered by spent, by, by, uh, user fee, you know, in terms of if you go to the swimming pool, if you win a pavilion, things like that, but kind of the, the general just, um, open space and green spaces is typically covered by, uh, property taxes.
Would the tax exempt such as Scott White and those pay the fees and everybody else?
The bring your talking about the, we need to defer the street fee, but we could also talk about a public safety fee, I think. We'd talk about two fees.
Yes, my recommendation at this time is to not do any additional fees to do a sixty-nine cent tax this year. That would allow you to do those priorities we just talked about, police, fire, fleet, solid waste, city manager, and compensation adjustments for police and fire. Um, task staff with developing the street maintenance fee for next year, including a robust public engagement process. So folks will understand what's coming and why it's coming and be able to provide input into that process and how that be set and calculated. But just knowing that, that if we don't adopt some additional fee next year, that, and, and you don't go above sixty-nine cents, that what we have this year will largely be what we have carrying.
I have one other question. Um, head count, on the sheet from before, and you updated it today. In the general fund, there were sixty-five new body, new people in the payroll. And I think in enterprise funds, there were another eight or so, but maybe a total of seventy-three. So, that sixty-five has gone to thirty-six.
Yes, sir.
And in the enterprise fund, why, are we still in the six or seven range?
No changes have been made to that proposal.
Okay.
And we do have a presentation on the water and wastewater fund that I'd like to get to tonight too, since we haven't done a deep dive on that. Um, I believe that al, almost all of those positions are in the water wastewater fund. I'm trying to think of if there's any in a different fund, because I don't think we did anything in drainage this year. I think they may all be in water and wastewater, the, the other remaining. So it'd be these thirty-six positions in general fund, and then what we talk about for water and wastewater tonight. And then, again, anything future, at least in the general fund, would be contingent upon some additional revenue in the future, whether that be a fee or a ta, another tax rate adjustment. But this year, tax rate adjustment will get you those priorities you asked me to do and stay under seventy cents. And so, I hope that this meets your, uh, direction.
And I know you need to get on to this, but sometime I'd be curious, you know, when we first started several weeks ago, you were seventy-five cents. So you'd see it come down to sixty-nine nine or maybe a little less. Is most of that head count, that, that five cent difference?
You can see, uh, in the, in the sheet I just passed out, it breaks down, I think, pretty well for you where that money is going. So about four million, just shy of four million is going, uh, you just the tax rate, oh, um, I see, I understand your question. Um, a lot of it was in personnel. I would say, yes, the majority. Um, I also, um, another big factor that I do want to point out, thank you for that question, because I meant to say it, is you'll see on the first page of this, uh, sheet that I just handed out, there's something highlighted in pink. They even highlighted it for me and I forgot to say it. Uh, so this, uh, this takes our pavement management program that we've been working on building for Slurry Seal and takes it out of operating for one year, and we will use capital for that for one year. We cannot sustain that year over year over year. But for this year, I believe that we can do that if we, if we feel like we're gonna make a street maintenance fund and get that back set up going forward. I believe that we can do that. So that's a million dollars.
We'll still do it, we should have funded it different.
Out of capital. Um, you know, we scrubbed, so there's a, a million other little things that I, that, but, but the, 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 the rocks were, were those things.
The pavement management. I- is this a new program or is this the one that we've been adding to fifty-two each year?
That's the, uh, one we've been adding two fifty a year. So we have seven hundred and fifty thousand in this year's budget.
Yeah.
We were, in the original propos, proposal, we were adding another two fifty to get us up to a million.
Yeah.
So again, I'm suggesting that we take all of that out, fund it with capital for one year, but then put it back in, not at seven fifty, but at a million. So we don't, so we keep our two fifty. That's enough, if y'all wanna go back down to seven fifty, of course, that, that's an option, and you don't really have to make that choice this year, that, because that's a next year decision. But that is, I, I, I just, I do wanna be clear, um, that that is not something that I would recommend sustaining over time because that's what we're trying to get away from, not move to, but, but for a year. Because I can't, if I could, if I, if I could get you the data you needed to set a street maintenance fee this year, then, you know, you may decide to keep, you know, set a small one and keep some of that, but, uh, but to do it right and to do it well, we really need the year to do it. And so I would really recommend we use one year of capital to keep that program going and then have, uh, have a street maintenance fund set up from next year moving forward.
I would agree.
So that is, that's a big number that I did, uh, uh, that Jennifer highlighted for me to remember to say it, and I almost missed it. So thank you for that question.
So what, um, maybe Cal's back there know the answer. What are we, what is the city spending currently on street maintenance?
We have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Are you talking about in totality?
In actuality.
I believe that our, uh, that our total budget is six to seven million. And they probably know a more precise answer than that, but it's, it's, it's more than six, less than seven.
Okay.
That does not include cap, major capital life, where, you know, midway, rebuilding midway, or, you know.
So the city's already capitalizing a large chunk every year. Anyway.
The six to seven million. The six to seven million is operating cost. Then TCIP is the, on the INS side, so that's in addition to the six to seven. That makes sense? So, six to seven is the, the crews that, that fill the potholes, the crew, not crews, the crew that fills the pothole. The crew that trims the tree on the, in the right of way. Um, the crew that repairs the concrete. Um, the crew that prints and installs signs. Uh, those, all of those things are six to seven million dollars, and that includes all ongoing operating costs. So, the personnel, the operations, the new purchases of equipment, the replacement equipment. But it doesn't, a- and it would normally include this one million dollars in, um, in, in pavement preservation. That is in the, in the, uh, operating fund. In addition to that, you have the millions of dollars that you spend in the capital side.
Yeah.
For major rehabilitation, new roads, pavement preservation, that's, that's mill and overlay. Um, that's two fif- two-point-five million in the current budget, two-point-two-five in the proposed budget. So, little, a drop a little bit in that, but adding two-point-two-five to, to specifically for rehabilitation of streets. So, really, overall, it's an increase, but just a, a, a little bit of a, little bit of down on mill and overlay, so we can add. Two-point-two-five for rehabilitation, because right now, we don't have a specific budget for rehabilitation projects. And those are, those are, uh, of course, needed in all districts. Um, Zoe has a, a particular, I keep looking at her and she's not looking at me. Um, but she has a particular need in her district for, um, some, some pretty, uh, uh. Extensive street rehab, Jessica in some of the older neighborhoods, um, in District One that also exist. Carl, some of the, some of the streets, uh, in District Three are also in need of rehab. Um, and I could even point out some in, in District Four, so they, they, it exists in all districts, but, um. Certainly heavier in our older neighborhoods. And again, that goes back to the point that if you don't. If, if you don't keep it up, then you're, then you're falling into an area where the only option, because you let it, you've let it, uh. Fall into disrepair that a, um, slurry seal or, you know, a quick update doesn't do anything. Because if tho- those treatments, slurry seal, crack sealing, um, even mill and overlay require. Structural soundness of the pavement, and if you don't do those things and you allow the su- the structural integrity of the street to degrade. Then your only option going forward is rehabilitation. Or just nothing. I guess, I, I suppose that's another option.
When we don't, this, did we lose in here, uh, I'm not saying anything for, what do you call it, district services or the?
There's nothing in twenty-six, but it remains in the plan for a future year. But again, contingent upon streets moving out into, uh, special revenue fund. So, everything we talked about can stay in the plan, assuming you set a fee. To cover street maintenance on twenty-seven and beyond. If we don't do that, then really, nothing else can stay in the plan. It's kind of an extreme. Uh, option, of course, you could do something in between, in terms of, you could set a fee that covers a part of street maintenance. But leave a part of it in general fund to, uh, be, to pay for out of property taxes. And in that case, you would start having, you know, because we haven't. You know, assuming you're not going to go above seventy, then we would start needing to make decisions about how, what would be funded and what wouldn't be funded in the future.
You call it extreme, it's clear.
I just mean extreme, like, you either have everything or you have nothing. So, I didn't, I didn't mean to present it quite that way.
But it's, it's very clear to me that way.
I, and, and that's what I feel like I may have not been in the past, so while this may seem very direct. I hope that it's very clear in that this is what we can do, this is what we can't do. Um, you know, in, in terms of some of the, the, the complaints that I know, it's your desk and mine. Um, I just, I just had this complaint this week, um, so, uh, you know, I'll give you an example of. Why are you not mowing the detention pond? Just, just for perspective, we have three people who mow detention ponds. And drainage channels, you know, any drainage infrastructure, we have three people for the entire city that do that. We have had three people for the entire city for years. So, as we have grown and added neighborhoods and added drainage infrastructure to mow. We have not, in turn, done anything related to increasing drainage fees or adding resources in drainage. So, those three people can only do what they can do. And, um, and so I just wanna be clear about that, that we have to match our expectations for how services are delivered. With the resources to deliver those services. And, and as we add neighborhoods and add, add areas of our community that need that maintenance, we have to pace that with resources. Or else we cannot, we cannot meet the, um. The, I, I, I don't know how to be more, more, say that maybe more eloquently, but. Uh, I think that's a great example of three people can only do so, so much. And as, if you are the twentieth fastest-growing city in America, and you're adding neighborhoods, year over year over year. You're adding drainage infrastructure year over year over year, those three people have more to do, but there's not more than three of them.
That's a great analogy.
So, and, and that, that is an example that repeats itself over and over and over again across our organization. So, we, you know, just, you, we can say. I, I can say that about code compliance officers, I can say that about building inspectors, I can say that about parks maintenance staff. I can say that about our building maintenance team, I can say that about our custodial team.
Animal services.
Animal services, so we have to just keep that in mind, that we, we have, we have to add resources. Or we have to adjust our expectations for services. Um, we can, and we can get more efficient in what we're doing, and we have opportunities there, and we will rise to those opportunities. And that will get us a part of the way there, but it will not, that, there's only, no matter how efficiently you mow a drainage ditch. There, there's only so many drainage ditches that can be mowed by three people, and that is just, that, that, that is just it. So, we can get better at what we do, but at some point, there's just so many calls for service that can be answered by a single police officer, they can get better at it. We can add equipment so that they're more, they're able to do more, uh, efficiently, you know, they can have mobile data laptops in their, in their, um. Uh, in their cars, so they don't have to go back to the department to write every report, but at some point. The only way to do more is to add more people. I feel like I'm a soapbox. Um. You, uh, before we jump into water and wastewater, I also wanna point out, um, this, uh, benchmarking sheet that you have here, um, as well. I think this is excellent data that you asked for, um, hopefully you have it. Y'all have it?
Yeah.
Yep, so this takes the cities that we use, at least in our compensation studies. And it shows you some of the information you, you all have asked me about, uh, Mia and Tracy about over the last, uh, several. Uh, weeks, and, and some of it we've talked about. Um, you can see the total tax rates of those entities. Uh, but as we've talked a lot about, tax rate is just one piece of a very complex puzzle. When you're, when you're, uh, considering what resources a community has to provide the services to their residents. So, a tax rate is a, a, a tax revenue is a function of a tax rate. Times the value that you're taxing, and that gives you the revenue that you have to use. So, the city of Temple, and this is based on current year, not twenty-six, because we wanted to be able to put apples and apples together. So, not, uh, not at all the information for next year's available, so this is current year. We have a net taxable value, the city of Temple does, of a little over nine billion. But you can see that Round Rock is nearly three times that. So, they can have a lower tax rate because they're applying that against a much larger value than the city of Temple is, it has. They also have a lower impact of the disabled property tax, uh, the disabled veterans property tax. So, it's a, it's, it's a lower absolute number, but it's also a, a much lower percentage. When you compare it to the twenty-five billion dollars of value that they have compared to the nine billion of dollars of value we have. Then take that a step fur- uh, further and say, they have nearly twice what we have to work with in sales tax revenue. So, they're generating just shy of seventy million dollars a year in sales tax, we are at thirty-seven. And I'm focusing on Round Rock, because it's the, the first one on the list and the highest there, but you can see similar information that ranges. Um, depending on what city you're looking at. We talked a little bit about Brian earlier, and their, um, their, their really amazing trash rate that they have for their community. They do have, uh, a tax rate that is similar to ours, and they have a taxable value that is similar to ours. Um, but they have an electric utility budget that is three hundred and six million dollars of revenue to their community. So, they have a factor that we, you know, that we don't have here. Um, San Marcos, College Station in Georgetown, to a lesser extent, have that same opportunity. That, that, uh, other communities have. Uh, street maintenance fees, so College Station, Brian, Colleen, and Waco all have the street maintenance fee that we've talked about today. So, this is not something that is new, uh, and many, many communities take advantage of that. Many communities in our region take advantage of that, not all of them, but, but many of them. Um, and then, as we've talked about in the past, many cities, in fact, most cities in our region. Of, of size comparable, uh, to us have impact fees. So, um, remember the importance of that. As it ties back to that second or that third column, that interest and seeking rate. So, an impact fee helps pay for capital needs. If you don't have an impact fee, your capital needs are met through your INS rate, and you can see that we are far above. We, 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 we lead the pack, not necessarily in a good way, in our INS rate. And, and so that, that's as a, in my, in, in my mind, that, that has a direct correlation to. How we have selected to fund capital, not through impact fees, but instead only through, um, through, uh, that service. Uh, related to taxes or charges for services that relates to water and wastewater. So, all of those things to keep in mind. Um, we are working on, um, a- at your direction, we're working on a robust public education campaign around budget. We, we, uh, would like to do some town halls and some in-person meetings, as well as other opportunities. That Heather and her team are working to create a plan on today. We've heard that you want us to focus in on this type of information, so people can understand. Kind of why our tax rate may be a little bit higher, there's other factors that play into that, including, um. Taxable value, including availability of sales tax or other revenue to help offset, uh, property taxes. Um, impact fees or no impact fees, street use fees or no street use fees, all of that plays a role. And the revenue that we're able to generate to provide the support of, um, the support to our community. Uh, on the next page.
Captain, is there anything else in the, in those, uh, that presentation, information that Brad just talked about that y'all want included? That you can think of? Anything that the public might find useful or more helpful, uh, on top of that information?
Well.
This sheet, just in, is, as far as the, um. Just as far as the work toward, um, informing the residents.
Yeah, my suggestion is just to have something, hey, um, with them. Take a budget in brief, we're also working on that, like, uh, you know, summarized version, so, um. We'll bring back a proposed communication plan, that, that's not what this is intended to be, but I know this is some of the information that you wanted to see. That you need today as you make some decisions on, on tax rate and direction to staff. But we will put this in a form, format that's even, uh, that, that's more. User-friendly as we work to, uh, with our communications team on how to communicate this out to our community.
Um, what I was asking is, while they are doing that, is there anything else that needs to be included? Other than this? Think about that, and if, if, well, we chair left and right, so that at the end of, we're not going, oh, yeah, you know what else we need, just add that to. I don't know if it would be possible, uh, but to kind of do the math. Take, take the math one step further and come up with like a total tax burden.
We have, um, yes, I think we can do that, um, and we, like, per capita, we can do.
Yeah.
That, um, which we've already started to work on, um, so we will, we will continue to work with this data. Um, I think that, that we can definitely do that, and that's a great idea. Um, one other item I wanted to point out to you, because we haven't talked about this, um, but I think this is really important on the second page. Is square miles of city. Okay, so you, a size has something to do with the population you're serving, but it is also has something to do with the area you're serving. We have almost eighty square miles of city that we're providing service for.
Wow.
Round Rock has thirty-six. So, as you thi- again, that's another factor that you have to consider, on how many fire stations you need to spread out and cover that area.
Yeah.
How many solid waste trucks, you know, you need, routes you need, because you might be collecting. Um, maybe the same dim- the same number, but much less dense. So, you're driving much farther to get to those cans that need to be collected.
Total number of households.
Roadways that need to be mowed.
They have a third more households. And half the square mile.
Yeah.
Right. That, that speaks to the density.
Right.
And efficiencies.
Yeah.
And, 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 and lower density, again, not necessarily a bad thing, not necessarily a good thing, just a thing, it's a thing.
Yeah.
And it's something that we haven't really, I, I wanted to point out, because we hadn't really talked about, and it's especially impactful. In, um, in pol- in, uh, fire. Uh, because you have to set fire stations that cover a certain radius, and so the more. Area that you have to cover, really regardless of how many calls for service you have. You have a factor of how many stations and the cost of those stations, the more stations you have to build. The more cost you bear in operating the fire department, because if you're just talking about calls for service. And how many a particular company can respond to, you can double up companies in a single station, which we do, and I'm sure these communities do as well. So, you can add additional companies without having to add the cost of the capital, so those are, there are multiple factors. I hope that this information is helpful, we'll continue to develop it out, to continue to collect it. But I think it's just important to know that you can't look at just one data piece, don't get too focused on one thing. Because there are way more factors that go into what you can provide and what level of service that you need for your community. A tax rate is an important thing, but it is far from the only thing in the equation.
How it's actually includes students, population?
Typically, a population includes not, does not include students unless they live there, um. Full-time, like, they, they're from there, if you will.
Right, well, I'm just looking at the, um, household income.
No, it, I don't believe that would include students who are not, um. Who consider their kind of homestead elsewhere. Typical college student would not be counted in a population. Or thus in the, um, household or census data. They would be, they would be counted with, from the, in the community that they hail from, usually.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's, it's specific to that person's circumstances, but.
Well, College Station, um, and it doesn't matter, it's just, both College Station and San Marcus have the lowest median age. And lower, uh, income.
Yeah. I do think that the college ha- impacts that, not necessarily because they're counting enrollment, but because.
More.
You plus, you know, and, and somebody who's, who finishes, if they stay there. Or they, they gather because there's nightlife or other, um. Reasons that young people who aren't enrolled in college wanna be there, college town kind of has, has a vibe.
I think that was interesting.
We added on another sheet, then, um. Probably, you didn't put it, the per capita on this one, right?
I don't think we have that, um, so, yes.
Yeah, um, but we had it on, for its net values per capita. Net taxable value.
It is on here, I'm sorry, on this smaller sheet, we do have the per capita, that's what you were trying to say, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the far right, uh, two columns is, you know, it. Uh, another data point. It takes the population device by the total of sales tax.
And it'll make you feel bad for Colleen.
Yeah, yeah.
But still jealous of Round Rock and Georgetown.
Look at their net, net tax. Look at their net net taxable value per capita for the. For Round Rock and Cedar Park. And Georgetown.
And again. They do not give me a discount on a fire truck. Because we have a lower.
Or building amount.
Net taxable value than Ground Rock, they charge me the same amount, it's very mean, very rude.
And you're on the for all those. You just kind of.
Maybe.
Well, one, we've got trailer house.
So I, uh I would like to cover water and wastewater, but I do need, we do need direction. On, did we hit the mark? Have we done what you wanted us to do? Are we good to move forward with this scenario, or are there additional changes you'd like us to? Work on related to general fund, and we can either do that now. And and then go to water and wastewater, we can go on to water wastewater and come back to that question. But actually, close in on needing to adopt, I do need some direction on, are we, are we getting warm?
I think so, I'm curious on the impact fees. What would that look like? To make this work.
No impact fees are proposed in the revenue calculation, so it's just the street maintenance fee. And. Again, I think you would need to set that around, we would, we have to do some work on that, but. Back of napkin calculations, I believe, because what I wanted to know is, am I proposing something to you that is untenable? So ten dollars, I think, is what you would be looking at. To to start covering the street maintenance fee, now as you add. Additional, if if you want to add additional teams, you would have to either increase those rates over time. Or uh supplement with other revenue sources, like for example, if you wanted to look at. Uh what portion of our streets are within the reinvestment zone and have an allocation there? Then you could keep ten dollars and do more, but you couldn't keep. Ten dollars and no additional revenue will get you what we have today, but it won't get you additional. That makes sense? So know it, so you can do this without impact fees. And again, the difference between impact fees and the street maintenance fee is an impact fee is charged, a one-time charge at the time a lot is developed. This is a user fee, which would be charged. Monthly. Uh based on ongoing operations of those um assets, not the. Not intended to cover the capital outlay to build them in the first place, which is what an impact fee would be.
I don't like that, they're having to vote for raising taxes or any of that, but. Cut it. Cut it tough, if we don't do these things, we're gonna be behind. Raising taxes is never popular.
I think it's been done appropriately, though. I mean, you know, at no point in the last few years, in my, in my opinion, have we. We, has the council voted to take revenue? And it is a taking, you are extracting money from people. At no point, and I believe, has the city taken revenue. From anybody that wasn't needed to, I mean, it, we talked about, there's not a big slush fund, there's not a bunch of money just sitting there. Um we, the the um. The rates have changed as the needs for the city have changed. Like I said earlier, for many years, we we enjoyed the increased um. Sales tax number. Without having to do anything on the adware tax rate. And um and I think, I think that was appropriate to do that, right? So um now is the time, I think that we're gonna have to uh switch. Switch, because it's not getting cheaper, as we've talked about, so.
I think we stayed below inflation rates the last few years. And grown a whole lot.
Well, I appreciate that marketing communications are really doing push for the different funding sources, I think that is a lot of confusion with that, so here we are throwing this. Festival, um but it's being funded differently, and I think. People struggle, why, why are you doing this and some of this?
I think it's all one big problem, I mean. So, city manager's question. Are they warm? Are they getting where, can they continue to move forward using this rate with no fees?
We're looking at sixty nine ninety nine.
That's what this is based on.
Yeah, and yeah, that's kind of what this number you're working on, sixty nine ninety nine.
Yes. That the revenue is calculated on that rate, so we will. As we, as we consider something lower than that, we will need to um take things off this list.
And off this list has already come twenty nine proposed positions. Right, going from sixty five to thirty six?
Yes, sir.
Yes, here, I'd like to see it just a little, a little bit lower, still in the sixty nine range, but. But to your question, what we can take off the list, I don't know.
You know, some other things that um that. Are important that we really haven't talked about, but just um. As a reminder. One of the things that's really important to the fire department is having the second set of turnout gear, so I didn't mention that, but I need to, that's that's also in here for a three-year plan. It's pretty aggressive, because it's forty five sets a year, it's a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, so that's that's in here.
A year.
Yes, sir. Adjustment to overtime, um certica- uh certification pay changes, um. Which are just as people, as firefighters are getting additional certifications, then there, they have pay that comes with that, so. You can see kind of the list, Jennifer and her team have, I think, done a great job of listing out. Um because it, if you're anything like me, if I, wow, that's a lot of money, where did it go? You know, real fast, it feels like it goes away real fast, so you can see just the the specifics on. Uh you know, for example, you know, a hundred thousand dollars in uh the the flocks, you know, mayor, you're um. You've you've been a proponent of that flock system, so um hundred thousand dollars there. We we have some uh IT-related equipment that's uh included that, you know, are are not. I mean, I suppose they're optional, but they're, they're not, um you know, they're kind of just replacing what we, keeping up with the. Uh equipment that that we need to have the technology to function. So you, you can look down that list, because I wanted you to see. What that is. And then keep in mind that penny on the tax rate is eight sixty, eight eighty?
Eighty one, yeah, eight eighty one, I believe.
So. That's the number you're looking for and or a portion of that, if you want to bring that down.
The additional funding for increasing various dues and subscriptions, is that due to price increases or that?
Is that in the IT section?
Yes.
Yes, sir, that is.
Price increases.
We're gonna run out of time to go over the other. Really want to talk about, but. And we, real quickly, and I'm looking for. Look at solid waste. We're stopped that one, I know that, here it is.
Eight six.
Yeah. So, you know. Talking about four new positions at three hundred grand, seventy five thousand feet, and that is the overnight. Uh the twenty, the, I guess doubling the. The number of employees in fleet, I mean, to to put on the night crew.
Uh solid waste is the three.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Are you looking for fleet?
Yes.
Okay.
I think of solid waste and fleet almost, because we get those trucks on the road.
They're very lean, they're very lean, yeah, fleet is on page three.
So eleven people. Um the solid waste, that was new route.
Three new routes and one uh commercial operations manager is those four positions.
Yeah, so in fleet service. Eleven new hires at a million bucks. Was that ninety one-ish? Well, that, you know. I mean, that's a little over a penny on the tax rate, that. That's remained a priority, I think we all agree that. That's important, but that's, that's a, that's a chunk, right, that's over a, that's over a penny, one point two pennies maybe. So Carl, if you talk about getting to sixty nine, getting under sixty nine ninety nine. Half a million bucks, you know, out of this list somewhere, gets you to sixty nine and a half. Roughly.
But I mean, we gotta be real with you.
Well, so, until I kind of look at that a little bit differently in that. How much is that? How much is that half a cent appreciated by the residents in the tax rate? Versus what does that then do to the department that doesn't get whatever it is that they need? You know, accumulatively over half a million dollars, what ends up missing versus? What dollar does it cost the resident? You know what I mean?
And it's just, the point I'm making is just optics, I know that.
Yeah.
Like, and I mean, that's a good discussion.
Yeah, so. All right, so I think the direction is to. Keep doing what we're doing. And if there's um. You know, council will figure puts.
You want it lower, or you don't want it lower?
I am fine at sixty nine nine.
I'm as fine with that as I'm with. Hundred percent class.
I mean, to me, yeah, whenever we um. Considered fees, that would be a way to, you know, to get it maybe into the sixty eights, but if we're not gonna do that. Otherwise, we're just looking at slashing some, it's the safest slash. And that, you know, that's my thing. So.
I I I agree.
We think so. Is that, is that a good enough number?
I think it is.
I look down to you here, I mean, that's, we we need these folks. Give the service that I'm being told that we, that our citizens expect.
Well, we'll give you a a few more days to think about it, but only a few. Gotta land the plane.
And yes, you you have it sitting in front, I mean, you have detailed. Position by position, department by department, take a look at it. And give city manager, um my thought, Jim Davis says, I'm good at sixty nine ninety nine. So you guys give the city man, see anything else you feel like you need to cut. Thanks, don't leave me hanging.
Thank you. Okay, so um if we can go. Through um water and wastewater. Mayor, on on solid waste uh routes, um. I would still like y'all to see that data, so you understand how we arrived at the recommendation. Uh but we'll, we'll set that for a future meeting, uh for the sake of time, if that's acceptable.
Your computer, what what recommendation?
How many routes to add in solid waste over the years, okay? I know that's an important point, so I want everybody to feel comfortable with how we have arrived at. What we're recommending. Uh so again, we've, we've, we beat this up today on how many customers we have. As of, as of right now, we have just uh just a little over thirty three thousand. Uh residential, thirty four hundred, commercial, for a total of thirty six thousand customers. We are um, uh you know, seeing some growth, not as high as we were uh in twenty. And twenty one, but still a good steady rate of growth in our water customer base, uh next slide please. Wastewater, a little bit different numbers, because we do have some people who, within the city limits, who do not have sanitary sewer connections, they're on septic, so that's why there's a discrepancy between how many water. And wastewater customers, next slide please. Um actually, Tracy, you've got the pointer, so you may have been intending to do this presentation, which I'm happy for you to do. Revenue is presented at just under si- uh seventy six million, um and expenditures matches that. And the the vast majority of revenue in the water and wastewater fund comes from fees for service, because that is how we fund water and wastewater, again, we've talked a lot about impact fees over the last. Several sessions, we don't, I, we don't charge those, so all of the revenue that's generated, both for operating. And capital needs in our water and wastewater system is generated by um ongoing fees for service.
I would point out on this slide too, that the waste, what's from wastewater. Is right around forty four percent revenue from wastewater fees. And right around fifty percent for water services. And I think you'll see in the future CIP for the water and sewer fund, what's driving the. The capital cost.
How does, how does zone money? Go into that?
Zone money does not interface with the water and wastewater fund, although there are several water and wastewater related projects that are funded by the reinvestment zone. That if they weren't funding them and you wanted to do them, they would have to be additions to this, this budget and thus have higher fees.
So it would have to, we'd have to charge more for that.
You would either have to charge more or cut capital out, out elsewhere, or operations out, out elsewhere. But the the water and wastewater projects that are done by the reinvestment zone are accounted for in the reinvestment zone fund. So they, the revenue, i- if, while, while they have an impact on the water and wastewater fund, because they're doing something we would otherwise. Perhaps charge a rate to do.
Fun, fun is spread maybe even when the zone spends money.
Yes.
Yes. These are the cost drivers um. Driving personnel and operational costs associated with collection, maintenance, true number four was added this year after in in. I and I.
Inflow and infiltration.
Uh environmental services manager, executive assistant. Intermedia and tech, those, for those all the positions that were added. Uh operational cost increase, inflation and um. Or just driving, I think it's more than inflation, but driving cost of. Chemicals, strategic energy management analysis. For power usage, uh generator maintenance. Invoice cloud uh for merchant and credit card charges and then operating capital. I did uh look into like how we could, right now, our credit card charges are built in. Um to our rates, my pass, and that's how they're, the cost of those are built into our rates. Rather than having a fee that passes on to the customer. Uh I did look into it some, it's complicated and would apply to different categories, but we're gonna dig into it deeper too. And that was at um. Council member Walker had a, had a questions about that. Uh water capital improvement plan, the water projects over the six years. It's ninety four point one million, we just completed our big uh water treatment plant expansion. That was over fifty million, so it's not as heavy on the, on the water, um I later will show you. A chart. Chart. Well, wastewater capital improvements, that's where a big cost driver for the capital. And wastewater's total was two hundred and twenty-three million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars over the six-year. Uh, landing window. Um, it includes a bog, boggy tree, boggy creek, drunk sewer, lift station enforcement, nineteen point three million. Uh, we're sending some of the other big ones. For the SSNO, which is infiltration and.
Inlovo and infiltration, meaning groundwater is getting into the lines and, but, you know, so you're treating rainwater instead of, uh, sanitary sewer water, so you've got. You either have cracks in your lines, you have, um, you've got, uh, manholes and disrepair that are allowing stormwater into your system, which then. Um, surges the system over, uh, 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 overwhelms the capacity during rain events and causes overflows.
Mode over cleanouts, for one please.
All right, just another look at the capital improvement programs.
Tracy, could you go back to the water projects, um, just, I just wanted to highlight that. Um, aquifer storage and recovery system is, is proposed, uh, for the first phase of that. Based on the new legislative, um, authority that we were able to secure for that project. Although this is just the first phase, is just the surface water piece, um, and then it also includes, um. An additional expansion to our membrane treatment plant that would allow us to add an additional eight million gallons of treatment, so, um, just. We don't want to be in the position that we were in for the, for the last expansion where we were eking it by. So, um, I just did want to point out those two major projects.
And what is the surface water part of, uh, for storage and recovery?
It's taking excess water from our, um, uh, from, uh, so in times that.
Pond over there?
No, 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 so water we would treat from Lake Belton through our treatment plants, but that we don't need to use in the system immediately. So we would put it like in February when we can, you know, nobody's watering their, their lawns. It's treated water versus replained water, which is the base tube of that project.
And that, that surface water then comes off of our. Uh, acre feet allocation.
Yes. But, you know, right now, we use.
Not using it all, ain't it?
We use about twenty thousand acre feet a year of our forty, roughly forty thousand acre feet of rights. We, uh, on a peak day, we use about thirty-eight million gallons, but on an average day, we use about nineteen million gallons. So that delta between the nineteen million gallons average and thirty-eight million gallons peak, you could be treating and storing in the aquifer, that's what this project is. And then pull it back out when you have a peak day and you shave that peak, so you're, you're, you're basically saving the water from when you have it to when you need it.
We don't get roll over minutes.
We don't get roll over minutes. That's a blast from the past.
That's true.
Back to this start, uh, again, it shows the, the total six-year CIP for water sewers, three hundred and seventeen billion dollars. Of that amount, uh, little less than thirty percent is for water projects, over seventy percent for wastewater. And then the two charts on the right show for waters, the water CIP, what's rehab, what's for the planning, what's growth and capacity. What's related to our mobility projects and then plant expansion. And then for the wastewater, uh, treatment, or wastewater CIP, fifty-three point seven percent of the projects. Are related to sanitary sewer overflow, so big chunks of that. And then forty-six point three to growth and capacity.
So just as a reminder, you know, we have done a lot of work on the big interceptor line, like Bird Creek, Knop Creek, Williamson Creek. But they're really the next phase in eliminating sanitary sewer overflows is taking, um. Uh, to, to build on, we've used a lot of analogies today, so I, I would say interceptors or trump sewer lines are the interstates of sewer lines. And so that, those are the big whales, but then you have all of the collector streets and the local streets feeding into that, those are the, the, the smaller lines, the lateral lines. Those need to be addressed in our old, especially in our older neighborhoods and older, uh, sewer basins, so. We've done a systematic, we've taken a systematic approach over the years, we studied one sewer basin at a time. We told you we were gonna start with the worst basin, which we projected to be Bird Creek, we did start there. It was, it is so far holding off to be true, but, so we've done Bird Creek, Friars Creek. Pepper Creek, I believe, we still have Little Elm and. One more.
The Hawkfin?
Mm-hmm.
You didn't say Williamson.
Yeah, one more to go, uh, in our sewer basins, so this number then takes, um, those. Uh, basins and the work that was identified, so we did smoke testing, dive flood testing, we, we did a comprehensive evaluation of where we had sewer lines that needed to be repaired or replaced. And so this number takes all, takes those sewer lines that we identified in those basins that are in disrepair. And it begins to either replace them through open cut replacements or through pipe bursting, a combination of those two. And if you want to know what that is, uh, you want to see it in action, talk tonight, it's a pretty cool process.
Maybe Mike can take us on a field trip.
He took me on a field trip one time, very interesting.
Proposed rates, so the, uh, budget is increasing the water minimum from twelve seventy-five to thirteen thirty-nine. And then the volume metric by fifteen cents to one eighty-five. On the wastewater side is taking the base rate from twenty-two ten to, uh, twenty-five point nine. And the volume metric is at, adding seventy-five cents to the volume metric. And this chart, it shows.
Can you go back there, back one, just to.
I'm not, or, the other adjustments are to the different size of New Year's line.
Is there, is there an overall percentage that's been applied to each line item? I could go from twelve seventy-five to thirteen thirty-nine, was that fifty-four cents?
It's.
About four percent?
I can tell you what the exact percentage is. But it was. It, it was trying to keep it to a percent, but not, not necessarily, it was a revenue requirement, not necessarily say we're doing the, or five percent.
Right.
How do we compare to other cities that the average bill now? Is, uh, residential's around eighty-eight, eighty-five, it would increase it to ninety-seven, sixty-four. And all the other cities that we have here. Uh, are their twenty-twenty-five rates, we don't have their twenty-twenty-six. We'll update those as we can, uh, a- access them.
So what is, what is totally different, like, so you'll be fleeing sixty-three. You'll be temple at ninety-seven, that's a thirty-four, that's more than fifty percent difference. What is this? What's the difference? What's the justification? For that large difference, of course, you can say the same thing at Plugerville, right? I mean, we're half of Plugerville, so I'm not, I'm not shooting holes in anything, I'm just asking. Um, is it, um, the amount of debt carried, what, what is?
Colleen has fifty-six square miles, we, and remember, we have seventy-eight, so we, we have more volume of lines.
Yeah.
Um, we're in, we have older infrastructure in many cases than they do, because we, we, uh, we have more historic development than Colleen did, so a, a lot of that. Sanitary sewer overflow stuff, the, the age of the lines that we're replacing, I'm, I'm not saying Colleen is a baby community, but much of their growth has happened in. Since, since more recently than, than, while ours has been a more steady growth.
It's been thirty or forty years.
Yes, yeah, lot, lots of growth in, in a very short time versus a much more steady growth for us, meaning that the infrastructure's older.
Right.
And so, um, that, I would say those two things drive the, the main, uh, impact. There, there's, there's probably a hundred other factors, but.
Program is. Smaller.
If, if that fees for.
And they do charge impact fees.
Yeah. Yeah.
But so does Squiderville, like really high impact fees, and yet they still charge a hundred and ninety-two dollars to their residents, so that's crazy.
A hundred and ninety-two dollars of impact.
Not, not, not to be judgmental to them.
In their, their.
They, they, they charge, I think, thirty-seven or thirty-eight thousand dollars per single-family house and impact fees and two hundred dollars a month. That, what, what are they doing? I don't know.
That, that sounds like Ed Del.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Or you can get all you can, cause hell.
They got some, they got some gold-plated sewer lines, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's interesting, so this is effective October first, and. Since, I guess we cannot really publicize it until after. The twenty-eighth.
We will, it's, we presented it today.
Yeah.
And. Will be, we can present it again next week.
Right.
And marketing is, will this be any of their marketing information given?
We can start, you know, at least that, that, that's something that you're considering, it doesn't have to be, that, that, you know, this is happening, but this is being considered.
People are watching.
Right.
What was it last year that we got a pretty good increase in water rate?
I believe so later. Last year, we're, we've been, we were paying in the year before for the water treatment expansion, you know, and now it's more on the wastewater side.
Okay.
And I would recommend that if we, if, if you want to consider something different than this plan, that we cut capital and not operating.
Cutting capital just gets you further behind. Right?
It's just, I, I mean, hate to be a broken record, but it is, if you're going, if we are going to pay for. Infrastructure for future development. And do that, you know, if we're putting in lift stations to support future development, and we're doing that without impact fees. And we are doing developer participation agreements, even for internal lift stations and lines that we often do. And we want to, uh, continue our progress on reducing inflow and infiltration and sewer overflows, then. I mean, there's always options, but you, you, you know, those are the factors, you, you've either got to do less capital. And that capital either has to be, you're gonna, you're gonna not prepare for development and growth, or you're not gonna maintain what you have. Or you're gonna charge impact fees to cover it, or. Uh, what, I, I wouldn't recommend we cut operational costs, because that, that really gets you in a bad spot. And as you can see, we wasn't really proposing significant operational additions.
I think the one last year or two years, whatever that one was, that was notice. You know, there was just, there's a lot of feedback about that, but three or four percent on a relatively small number.
I'll give that exactly now.
With everything that's going on, there's gonna be feedback anyway.
Across the board, not specifically about walkers. I mean, the purpose of that fund is to maintain itself.
It does have to cover its own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're not gonna take out a duty, so you have to cover your costs, you have to cover capital and operating. Okay. That it on this? Anything else?
That, I think, is, um. What I can get from today, thank you for your time and attention, and sorry we're making you come at one o'clock. Almost done.
Yeah.
Me too.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your good work, um, I know it's a lot. Lots of moving parts, and we, as always, appreciate everybody involved, not just city manager. Whole accounting team and really everybody, the brat department, everybody's involved in this, so thank y'all for your good work.
In particular, these three ladies here have really, um. They have done a lot of work on my behalf this year, and I'm very indebted to them, um. I have, I have asked them to put together. Uh, I have lost count of the scenario that I'm on at this point, so, um. They have not complained about it for one minute, and it's been a lot of, yeah, that's true, to me, they haven't, they haven't had anything about, about me to my face, so, um. It's. I really appreciate the support.
Of course, you never complained about council wanting you to go back and do something different either, never.
Never.
Very good, well, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a heavy lift, um, and it's much appreciated, let me stop. So thank y'all for everything, and with that, it is five minutes.